You are watching Access La Porte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is January seventeenth, twenty twenty three, meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access La Porte County dot org.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our Tuesday, January seventeenth, twenty twenty three, meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. If everyone could sign us electronic devices and stand for the pleasurable allegiance of a side.
But the leaders. The United States of America and to the Republic of Massachusetts. Why they can undergo the physical. The last thing you can just from.
Miss Nyla upon the roll call, please.
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Ms. Deitch.
Present.
Mr. Don Preslinsky.
Present.
Mr. Paul Preslinsky.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Jagus. Present. Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have nine present and no one absent.
Thank you, Miss Nyla. Before we get started, we have an additional item that would like to ask the council if it's possible to add to the agenda. Resolution is in front of your score. The fifty to fifty percent match for grants that per ordinance they need submitting is approaching the deadline, so.
Yes, I move that we amend the agenda to add this resolution to our meeting agenda.
Mr. President, could you explain that one more time? What it's for?
I can. Yeah. So this is the approving submission of the application for the grant for our community crossing program for twenty twenty three. And as we know, as I know, and we all know that the application deadline approaches at the end of January and it's five weeks in this month. And so this is our second meeting, and this is the only opportunity to pass a resolution. This is just to allow them to approve, apply for the grant. It's not the actual appropriations.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dyche. We have a motion by Councilwoman Dyche to the board and a second by Councilman Simmons. Do we need to do a roll call for this one? Okay, Ms. Nyla upon the vote, please.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
Ms. Deitch.
Hi.
Mr. Don Preslinsky.
Hi.
Mr. Simmons.
Hi.
Ms. Jagus.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Preslinsky.
Hi.
Ms. Tillman.
Hi.
And Mr. Dabney.
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Can you just add that to the back of the rest of the resolution? So anyone needs additional time to look over it? Okay, approval of the minutes of our regular hybrid zoom meeting, January third, thirty. Questions or additions to the agenda, I mean, to the minutes?
I move that we accept, accept the approval, approval of the minutes.
Support.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Dyche to accept the minutes as presented and second by Councilwoman Tillman. It's now upon the vote, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Hi.
Ms. Deitch.
Hi.
Mr. Don Preslinsky.
Hi.
Mr. Simmons.
Hi.
Ms. Jagus.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Preslinsky.
Hi.
Ms. Tillman.
Hi.
Mr. Dabney.
Hi.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Miss Nyla. Reports of standing committees. Having none. Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Today on January seventeenth, twenty twenty three, the City Finance Committee met. However, there was not a quorum. We had an informal meeting, starting with the claims dockets for January seventeenth, twenty twenty three, fund number two zero four two Riverboat Claims, zero dollars. E F T Riverboat, four hundred eighty seven thousand, three hundred seventy seven dollars, sixty two cents. And that is for E S G. Fund number two zero three one Boy Development, zero dollars, E F T, zero dollars, total claims, totally four hundred eighty seven thousand, three hundred seventy seven dollars, sixty two cents. Also, the Riverboat Statement of Cast Positions Fiscal Year to Date, January twelfth, twenty twenty three, ending balance, two million, seven hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred thirty two dollars and eight cents.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. Claims Docket, January seventeenth, twenty twenty three, fund twenty forty two Riverboat Claims, zero dollars. E F T, four hundred eighty seven thousand, three hundred seventy seven dollars and sixty two cent. Fund twenty thirty one Boy Development, zero, total claims for four hundred eighty seven thousand, three hundred seventy seven and sixty two cents. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the claim, second.
We have a motion by Councilman Don Preslinsky and a second by Councilman Paul Preslinsky. It's now upon the vote, please.
Ms. Deitch.
Hi.
Mr. Don Preslinsky.
Hi.
Mr. Simmons.
Hi.
Ms. Jagus.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Preslinsky. Mr. Paul Preslinsky.
Hi.
Ms. Tillman.
Hi.
Mr. Dabney.
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
And Mr. Matt.
Hi.
We have nine in favor, no one opposed.
Thank you, Miss Nyla. Reports of special or select committees. Yes, I'm going to report, Mr. Kalavich.
Yeah. Tommy Kalavich, Fire Department Commissioner of Member, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I have a problem with this lit tax. I spoke to my partner in crime, County Councilman Otto Cunningham. We're kind of in hoots together. I asked when we start collecting the lit tax, half a percent out of our paychecks. He said that began collecting in October. The problem I have with that is the firefighter's contract is not until December thirty first, two thousand twenty four. And I just asked Chief Work when the police contract ends. It ends on the same date. So basically, what we're doing now is all we're doing is supplementing the county, and our firefighters, firefighters, our members, the police members aren't seeing that. They need to reopen their contract so we can start collecting into that. Additionally, the city workers are now going to get a paid vacation day for their birthday, and they also need that into their contract. But we need to get what's due to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. In the future, can you communicate that with the liaison for the commission? So the council member could give the report. Thank you. Any reports from the mayor or any other city officers or departments?
Good evening, Council. Chief Walker, Michigan City Police Department. Just wanted to give some statistics from last month, December, and the year-end totals. Last month, we answered two thousand eight hundred and seventy seven calls for service. We took three hundred and eighty two reports. We seized twenty four firearms. In twenty twenty two, we answered thirty five thousand, nine hundred and sixty five calls for service, which was down one thousand three hundred and ninety from twenty twenty one. We're currently hosting applicant testing this Saturday, the twenty first. So if anybody is still interested in applying for the Michigan City Police Department, the application is online and available. Again, we're excited about that. We have twenty applicants. Unfortunately, we only did one testing last year. So some of those applications I feel may still be maybe stale. So obviously, we're looking to expedite that process and make that a reoccurring thing this year until we can get up to full staff. So again, starting this year, last year, they did one of those in March. This year, obviously, we're starting this Saturday. So I want to see that continually happen until until we're at full staff. So we'll make that a priority. I wanted to recognize and honor the retirement of Officer Charles Henderson, effective January eleventh of twenty twenty three. He has completed twenty six years of service, so I wanted to recognize him. And give just an update on our flock cameras. I know that's was a big thing for the council over last year. I spoke with our representative today. They finally got the approval from NDOT and reference to our cameras that are on state highways. When I said those flock cameras are expected to break ground at the end of the month here on the twenty eighth, so. Thank you.
I have a question.
One second, Mr. Chief.
Speaker.
Councilwoman Dyche.
I do the, as far as the advertising for the testing, so where did you do all the advertising at?
So that's just been in-house right now, just on, well, I would say not in-house, but just on Facebook is what we've done. We are working with a marketing company to basically promote ourselves. We have, on the thirty first this month, we have basically pictures planned to promote all the different divisions, personnel, opportunities within the Michigan City Police Department. So again, with the market, the big idea company in which we've worked out a contract with. Again, they'll start working on that promotional materials and start doing some more of that. Let's say social media advertising, LinkedIn, Twitter, all that stuff. Do do some more of that social media type advertising. So again, that's something that we're working on and it's in process. But again, right now, it's just been up to us.
So no paid advertising on Facebook?
Not on this. No, no.
And are we going to do another testing then sometime soon?
Absolutely. So we'll see where this testing, what the results are from this. Obviously, it appears we have twenty three applicants. I don't know who, you know, we reached out to all of them to try to confirm. We got a couple back. We actually had twenty five. We know that two responded back, said they were no longer interested. So my best knowledge right now, we have twenty three, so we'll probably get half of that to show up on Saturday. You know, like I said, we personally reached out through my office, myself and the Assistant Chief reached out to all the applicants, just to, we wanted to get that confirmation. We, again, these applications sat since they've been except, accepting them since March of last year. So so some of them are more current than others. But again, that's a priority in my, in my eyes, that to get us to full staff, we have to do reoccurring testing until we are full staff. So once after this weekend, we'll, we'll have a list of qualified applicants, and they'll proceed into the next stage, which would be like a background investigation. So once we go from there, then we'll have an idea of when the next, or you know, when we need to test again.
Thank you. I have one more question. Councilman Don Preslinsky.
Yeah, chief, as far as the firearms, you said that were seized, I think it was twenty four.
Correct.
Right? So is that a high number seized? Or, I mean, are, are we getting higher numbers of firearms taken off the streets? And especially what effect? I remember last year when the state legislature, yeah, a Republican-led state legislature voted into law that you can carry a concealed weapon without a permit. What effect has that, do you think that's had on any of this?
So obviously, we're right to carry state. So those individuals that are qualified to carry and, you know, don't have felony arrests on their record can still carry. We are still seeing individuals that are carrying that aren't permitted to by law. So, you know, that's a lot of those seizures come through that. Some of those seizures do come through like our La Porte kind of drug task force and some of their operations here in town. So some of that, it's a combination of things.
But do you think the number is higher?
I think that's a good number. I mean, total amount seized, so I, I, I would say, I would, I come and speak for the last few months here. I know twenty four in a month, so that was just the month of December. So that, to me, is pretty significant. You know, let's, you know.
Well, that's great. That's great to hear. And then how is our, the marketing program coming along with the big ideas, you know, since we initially sat down and talked about it, and then we, you know, had the meeting and myself and Councilwoman Dyche were there and got this, this.
So again, so we started here on the thirty first. We have a day planned essentially to, you know, stage different photos, right? We want our, we want our department to be represented by our people and in our different divisions. So Detective Bureau, Drug Task Force, Traffic, you know, Warrants, Patrol, Community Relations. So, you know, we're working on basically essentially staging these types of photos and these interactions so we can get quality, you know, we have a base content of photos to use for, you know, social media content for advertising, for marketing. Just basically, we'll have a photo library. This is where we're going to start. And then from there, we can, we'll start building content with them.
What do you think the whole program, the whole marketing program will be?
Well, I'm, I'm hoping in February, I'll start taking off once we have this photo bank. So that way, ultimately, as we move into, I would say, our second testing of the year, I'm sure it's going to be inevitable that we can start hitting that, that marketing strategy that we have confirmed with them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. One quick question, chief. With the ATF passing recently, the ban on the pistol brace or whatever I think it was, is that something you anticipate impacting us locally or it's yet to be seen?
Are you talking a brace like?
Yeah, where like a regular pistol was like modified to be like a short barrel rifle, I think, is how they describe it.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure we'll see some similar effect to that, you know. Unfortunately, we are seeing modifications to, you know, to pistols. They're easily available, unfortunately. You know, when we did see the, you know, we've seen some of the switches and stuff like that, where it's an easy modification that these individuals are making to, to pistols, essentially semi-automatic. And then, you know, some of these alterations can make them fully automatic. And, you know, we have seen some of those in town and have confiscated some here. So I would assume as a matter of time, we will see some of those alterations, you know, come through here.
All right, thanks, chief. Thank you. Other questions? All right, thank you. Any other city officers or department heads? I've not, Ms. Nyla petitions?
And there are no petitions this evening.
Communications.
Correspondent was received to the clerk's office on January third from Councilman Michael McBrady regarding proposal for the Athletic Field House Community Center Complex in Michigan City. Correspondence was also meant to be in the clerk's office from Patrick Burke, thirteen oh two Lakeshore Drive, requesting to be reconnected to the city sewers at his home. And according to ordinance number four five three eight, an accident report was received in the clerk's office regarding an accident that occurred with the Michigan City Police Department vehicle on December twenty first, twenty twenty two. And that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Resolutions?
The first resolution, a resolution by title only, opposing proposed NIPSCO rate increase electric utility service. And this is introduced by Mr. Don Preslinsky and Mr. Paul Preslinsky.
Yeah, Mr. President, if I may, I'd like to read this resolution in its entirety.
And, yeah, Ms. Nyla, can you have me as a co-sponsor to this?
Okay. And as the city clerk read the title, this is in reference to the NIPSCO proposed NIPSCO electric rate increase that is in front of the I U R C right now. I took the timeout to attend the public hearing on January the fourth at Velt Russell High School. And there were also, I think, three other residents there from Michigan City speaking against this rate increase. But I thought it was very important that somebody from the city council representing the, the city as a whole went over there and spoke against this rate increase and what it affect it could have on the city, not only on its citizens, but also on the city budget. Moving forward, whereas Northern Indiana Public Service Company pursuant to I C eight, one, two, four, two point seven and eight dash one dash two dash sixty one and eight dash one dash two point five dash six has filed a petition before the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission under cause number four, five, seven, seven, two, for number one, the authority to modify its retail rates and charges for electricity, utility service through a phased-in increase of rates totaling when it all comes to a, to the end, of sixteen point five percent. Approvals of the new schedule of rates and charges, general rules and regulations and riders, both existing and new. Approval of a new rider for variable non-laboral operating and maintenance expenses associated with coal-fired generation. Modification of the fuel costs, adjustment to pass back a hundred percent of off-system sale revenues net of expenses. Approval of revised common and electric depreciation rates applicable to its electrical plant in service. Approval of necessary and appropriate accounting release, including but not limited to approval of certain deferral mechanisms for pension and for other post-retirement benefit expenses. Approval of regulatory accounting for actual cost of removal associated with co-unus following the retirement of Michigan City Unit twelve and C and A, modification of joint venture accounting authority to combine reserve accounts for a proposal of passing back joint venture cash. Approval of alternative regulatory plans for the A modification of this industrial service structure and B the implementation of a low-income program. And the last point, review and determination of NIPSCO's earnings bank for proposals purposes of I C eight dash one dash two, forty two point three. And whereas the I U R C, having held a field hearing on January fourth, twenty twenty three, is currently accepting public comments regarding the proposed rate of sixteen point five percent. And whereas the electric rates of NIPSCO are already among the highest of the utilities mentioned on the website of the I U R C. And whereas residents of Michigan City are already hard-pressed and to pay high electrical rates and certainly should not be burdened with rate increases in these most difficult economic times. And whereas we are concerned that NIPSCO's parent company, NiSource, has looked to NIPSCO electric customers to help subsidize and support other money-losing operations of the parent company. And whereas we would like our sentiments opposing the rate increase placed on the public record for the consideration by the I U R C. Now therefore be resolved by the Common Council of Michigan City, Indiana, that the city of Michigan City, Indiana opposes the proposed increase to NIPSCO rate rates due to the adverse impact it would have on families struggling to pay existing utility bills. That rather than being rewarded for failure, it is time that NIPSCO executives take pay cuts and undertake fiscally responsible cost-cutting measures instead of seeking a bailout from our already overburdened ratepayers. And number three, the city clerk is directed to forward a copy of this resolution to public comments of the Indiana Office of Utility Consumer Counselor via email in the email address or by mail at Consumer Services Staff in Indianapolis, Indiana.
Thank you, Councilman. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Thank you, Councilman Preslinsky. Um, as a co-sponsor to the, the resolution, I would like just to reiterate the fact that NIPSCO is and has been a leading high-rate utility in the state of Indiana. And I believe that we need to not only look at what the rate means for citizens of our communities and in their territory, but also a factor on the high rate and what it does to commercial and business, businesses that depend and that are dependent on electricity rates. I, I think it has a, a big economic impact also. And I just, it amazes me that they're talking about going with solar and going with wind, and they're going to be saving money. Well, I don't know, are, are, and then yet, and then yet, they want to fight. They want to fight about the coal pits or the ash pits up here at the NIPSCO station. So, you know, it's like, it's really a mixed bag of worms when it comes to NIPSCO. And, and we need to do whatever we can to keep them reined in. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Dabney. Motion to approve?
Second.
Have motion to approve by Councilman Dabney and a second by Councilwoman Tillman. Yeah, we have one more comment.
I have a, a couple more comments. And I know that the rate increase is going to start going if it's approved. It'll start going into effect, and then it'll be stair-step. I believe it's starting in October of twenty twenty three. And then it will conclude in July of twenty twenty four. I believe that's the right date. It's okay. Now, and according to my math, that increase is going to be somewhere approximately of the neighborhood of three hundred dollars per utility customer. To me, that's a big hike. It's a big hike to us. It's a big hike to low-income families that can't afford NIPSCO bills now. And they certainly won't be able to afford this. And the other thing I'm going to find out, and I'm working with NIPSCO right now, is to find out exactly what effect that'll have on the city. You know, are we a residential? Are we commercial? Are we municipal? Yeah, I'm waiting for an answer from NIPSCO to tell me exactly what kind of customer we fall under. And you know, if that rate increase comes through, what effect that's going to have on our city budget? Now, in talking to the city controller, she said that they had already budgeted out, I don't know, another ten or fifteen percent, I believe, for utility bills for this year. But still, I want to know exactly what effect that's going to have on the, on the bottom line for the city. So with that being said, thank you, Mr. President. And I would strongly encourage all of my colleagues here on the council to vote for this resolution. Does this here affects everyone? Everyone that's sitting here on the council, that's sitting in the audience, and that's watching here tonight on TV. That's what this rate increase will do to us if it goes through. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. Just a quick comment. Yeah, Councilman Dabney. This is like the second time we've been in here talking about opposing rate hikes. And the last time we had this, the same conversation, I was telling the public, you need to reach out to boards of directors of these companies. They have these, these public sessions where you can show up and yell at some people from NIPSCO, but people that really make the decision are board of directors. So they have board of directors listed on the website. Those are the people who make the financial decisions when it comes down to these companies. So I would, I would say if you could reach out to the board of directors, that would be very beneficial. Because like I said, they have these, these public sessions where people show up, yell and scream at them, and they're not really the decision makers. It's the board of directors there. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. We have a motion and a second. Ms. Mop, Ms. Nyla upon the vote, please.
Mr. Don Preslinsky.
Hi.
Mr. Simmons.
Hi.
Ms. Jagus.
Hi.
Mr. Paul Preslinsky.
Hi.
Ms. Tillman.
Hi.
Mr. Dabney.
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mr. Matt.
Hi.
And Ms. Deitch.
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla.
Mr. President, if I may, if I may, just to make one more comment about this. Is that okay? Yeah, and in line with what Councilman Dabney was saying, that, yeah, you, you can reach out if you can even get ahold of an executive or a board of director from NIPSCO to give them your displeasure. But that's why they have these field hearings for people to show up at, to discuss and to air their issues. to discuss and to air their issues with NIPSCO having a rate increase. And that's why it's very important that someone shows up and speaks in 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 favor of of the citizens instead of just thinking, well, we have to get to the uh to the directors. You're not gonna get to the board of directors. The I U R C is the board that makes the final decision on what people are saying when they show up at those uh hearings. And that's what those hearings are for. Thank you.
Ms. Snyder, our next resolution?
A resolution by title only, amending section three C of Resolution Number four eight one three to add a service truck to the list of essential equipment to be purchased for the Central Maintenance Department with A R P A monies. And this is introduced by Mr. Dabney and Ms. Ziegus.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Any comments from sponsors?
Yep. Uh, real quick, this was a money that was approved through the A R P committee here to to make some purchases. And uh what happened, they they came up, uh, they priced out a truck and come to find out they didn't need all of the money that they thought they would need to buy a certain truck. There was her bells and whistles that would be on that truck that we did not need, so it freed up some other money. Now we can go back and possibly get a second uh maintenance truck. So that's what we're looking to do here. It's about sixty-four thousand dollars or so. Sixty-six thousand dollars that was left over. So they're asking to be able to use that sixty-six thousand to be able to purchase a second truck.
Thank you, Councilman Dabney. Uh, any comments, uh, any other comments from the sponsor, Councilman Ziegus?
Uh, yes, if I recall, uh, the truck wa- the original truck was with all kinds of toolboxes and all kinds of equipment attached, and it turned out that we could use some of the stuff that we already had for that. So instead of putting in new toolboxes, et cetera, use the old ones and were able then to finance a second service vehicle.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilwoman Tillman?
Um, yes, I I would just like to know, so what's the remaining funds uh that was originally appropriated that would be available to purchase this second vehicle? Um, they are, it's already been quoted a price?
Who's that uh Councilman? Who was that directed to?
Controller Hoffmaster, would you have that information?
I don't know the exact price.
Um, Yvonne Hoffmaster, city controller. Um, yes, uh, Mr. Harris, our central maintenance director, got a got a quote from um from the Fort Chrysler where he purchased the first truck. So they gave him a price for this second truck also.
Thank you, Controller Hoffmaster.
I have a question. Uh. I have a question too.
Councilwoman Deitch.
Um, so is this replacing uh um, is there a safety issue? Is there, what's, why are we replacing?
So from what I understand, the truck that the central maintenance did have became unsafe to drive, and they're currently borrowing a truck from the sanitary district to use for that department.
Okay, and my last question is, um, so are we doing leasing for multiple departments and buying for others? And and how are we making that decision? Because I thought we were doing leasing of vehicles mostly, and now we're purchasing outright vehicles.
Well, we had the option on this, but the original plan had said to purchase.
Okay.
So we left it as a purchase. So instead of having to replace the truck in three years, this one will last, you know, I believe they said, you know, quite a bit longer than that.
This is brand new and it's sixty-six thousand dollars?
Um, I believe it came in uh fifty-three, fifty-five, somewhere in that neighborhood.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Deitch. Uh. Councilwoman Tillman?
I was just gonna say, it would have, it would have been nice to have um seen that quote, the estimate of everything for that vehicle.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tillman. Uh, Councilwoman, Councilman President.
Yeah, uh, a question, I guess, to the authors. Because I know Mr. Harris isn't here, and I don't know if Yvonne can answer this, maybe, maybe not. So the original thought process was to buy one truck at, I don't know, sixty-six thousand dollars, but it had bells and whistles on it. Pardon?
It was a lot, no.
Okay, eighty thousand or whatever, and it had bells and whistles on it.
The original appropriation was for a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars.
Okay, all right, okay, for one truck, for one truck. So all right, so we saw the need for one truck. But since we had some leftover money, the sixty-six thousand dollars, fifty thousand dollars, instead of putting it in the A R P fund, maybe purchasing something else that we really needed, we decided, hey, you know what? We got sixty-six thousand left over. Let's just buy another truck with it. I mean, what was the thought process that we needed to buy a second truck when the original request was for one truck to begin with? Now we wind up with two trucks. Can anybody answer that?
That was the safety.
I'll go.
Go ahead.
Uh, at the at the beginning, uh uh Hoffmaster said that uh they said that the truck is not usable. So just sort of what now, but they said the second truck, they're borrowing a second truck. They're borrowing the truck. So now money that we've already accommodated has been freed up to buy another truck. So we're trying, I'm trying to make sure that our people, our city workers are riding around with safe equipment.
Oh, I understand, and I'm glad, I'm glad you do.
That's it, and I I.
That's my one concern for all states, for all uh.
Mayor Perry?
Hey. For all uh public uh employees.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, we've been replacing vehicles in our fleet because our fleet is old and our repair costs are extremely high. These trucks that we're talking about right now, it wasn't brought up a day ago, a week ago, even a month ago. We were talking about this in the twenty-twenty-two budget. So we've been living on Band-Aids for a long time. And as far as whether we lease or buy, that question came up earlier. We treat all of this equipment on a on a case-by-case basis. In the case of police vehicles, it was more cost-effective for us to lease. With utility-type vehicles like we're talking about here, it's a function of supply and demand and availability at at a ca- at a certain cost. Vehicles are going up because the industry, both car and trucks, are going electric. So we have to take advantage of these prices when we can, provided it's a justified cost, which it is, because our equipment fleet is is old and it's struggling. So I hope that answers your question, Councilman.
Yeah, so I guess just for clarification, maybe I didn't understand the original explanation about this. But I thought the original request was to replace one truck, correct? And that we had to borrow a truck from the sanitary district because the original truck was unsafe. Correct?
Well, in in twenty twenty, when this appropriation was originally brought to the ARPA committee and then before the council, they only needed the one vehicle. And earlier last year, it became apparent that the vehicle that uh Mr. Harris was using became unsafe and and he was, and he began using a vehicle from the sanitary district.
A second.
So it was, it was a
A second vehicle.
A separate vehicle. The first one was a a mechanic's truck. Because that vehicle, um, I believe it was something with the frame or something. It was unsafe. So we replaced that truck. And then they found out the equipment on that truck was still in good shape, so they used that, which left the excess funds. And earlier last year, when the um other vehicle went down, Mr. Harris came to the mayor, which came to the ARPA committee, to ask to use and already appropriated funds to purchase a second vehicle. But when this was originally requested, that vehicle was still operational.
So um, real quick, what what's the plan for the two vehicles that are gonna be replaced by these two new vehicles if this were to pass?
Oh, the the two vehicles that are are unsafe, I'm not the two new ones? The service truck is, we already purchased and
The vehicles that are uh deemed unsafe or inoperable or?
I I'm not sure um what they do with those.
I don't know. Are they like, are they being traded? Are they being scrapped? That's what I was basically asked.
Yeah, I I don't believe they traded them in. But um, they
Don't.
Sorry.
They'll be kept out in the boneyard for uh
Parts.
Arts for other vehicles.
Okay.
Obviously not these two because they're brand-new.
Okay.
One, the new vehicle will be in the fleet as a service vehicle, and the other be- vehicle will be driven by Mr. Harris, who in a situation of snow removal, he will, he has attachments that that vehicle then will be used like a snowstorm. It will go into service for that event.
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Tillman.
I I'm just curious, uh, if you can answer this, Controller Hoffmaster. So you're indicating that the second truck uh became inoperable sometime in twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. Was that before or after the budget hearing?
Um, I believe it was after.
Thank you.
Uh, Council, Councilman Presblevsky?
Yeah, uh, the vehicle that Mr. Harris is driving now. Okay, is that deemed unsafe or what what kind of vehicle is he driving now?
Right now, he's driving the sanitary district's vehicle.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Thank you, Control Hoffmaster. Uh, Councilman Paul Presblevsky?
Um, I would, uh, I agree with Councilwoman Tillman that it would have been nice to see the uh estimate or proposal on this vehicle, but I would like further information on is this truck a half-ton or three-quarter and what kind of is this uh attachments for snow plowing? Wh- what exactly are we purchasing since nothing's in front of us?
Um, I don't know who, but I've answered that's.
I can, I will forward the quote that we received that uh was given to the ARPA committee. I will forward that when I go back to my office after the meeting.
Well, let me ask you this. Why don't we have, why eh do we not have it right now?
Um.
The ARPA committee is a subcommittee, is an ad hoc committee. That's information that the council should have. You're expecting us to vote on this, and we should have it.
Yeah, we're, we're just asking you to vote on an amendment to the plan.
Yeah.
That's all we're asking you to vote on here. Well, I will forward it as soon as I get back up to my office. All I know is it's a pickup truck. That's all.
Okay.
And could really quick, just for my own sanity and clarity. The amount of money that was originally approved was not used. Additional funds was seen and a need for an additional truck was also uh identified. So the additional funds, you're asking us to use those funds to purchase an additional vehicle now that the need has presented itself?
That is correct.
Okay.
And and to do this, because of the final rule on the ARPA funds, we had to amend the original plan, which was approved by this council back in October of twenty twenty.
Okay, thank you, Control Hoffmaster.
It just became known to me that uh Chief Legault of our fire department uh had a copy of the quote from the uh ARPA committee meeting, so I'll bring it up and you can all pass it around and peruse it.
Thank you, Mayor Perry. Uh, Councilman Dabney?
Um, and just to to point out that we have, we receive our agendas with all this information a week before, almost a week before these meetings. So uh, folks like myself call and get answers to these questions before I show up here and turn it into this. Um, and that could be done by all councilmen if they were to choose to do that. Um, but, you know, the 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 call folks up and the gotcha game is going strong right now. That we receive our agendas and everything a week ago.
No, I didn't. Is there, is there?
Didn't open your email.
Oh, I I take exception to those remarks by uh Mi- Mr. Dabney and also the remarks that he made to Councilman Prisbalinsky earlier with with the uh Snyder remark to him and uh impeaching his opinion. And that's, I think that it's okay, you know, with with your remarks, Mr. Dabney, but I think that if somebody's out of town and they didn't get the information, which is the case, that I think that you don't need to chastise somebody about information because because that information should be attached and you should not be attacking somebody. That should be attached to the resolution. No, 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 you can, and I know that you like that, but I'm gonna take you out on, you know, and bring it out, that that should be attached to the document.
That's fine.
There's no excuses. You're making excuses for him. I'm not, I'm
All right, council comment is closed. Is there a motion?
I move them.
Motion to approve. We have a motion to approve by Councilman Dabney. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a second by Councilman Mack. Ms. Snyder on the vote, please.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Ms. Ms. Ziegus?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Prisbalinsky?
Hi.
Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
Mr. Mack?
Hi.
Ms. Dyke?
Hi.
And Mr. Don Prisbalinsky?
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder. Can you read our next resolution, please?
A resolution by title only, sixth addition to the initial plan for use of portion of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies for the infrastructure for the city's east side annexed property. And this is introduced by Ms. Dyke, Mr. Dabney, and Ms. Chicks.
Any comments from the sponsors?
Sure.
Councilwoman Deitch?
Yes, um, so this is in reference to the property that we've been talking about for the water and sewer that we are uh obligated to provide service to. And you'll see um a couple of appropriations um further in the agenda. Um, the plan is to uh use uh ARPA rainy day and riverboat funds to to uh to pay for this, so a combination of all three. And this is just in addition to the plan for ARPA so that we can uh do the appropriation.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any comments from any other sponsors? Uh, Councilwoman Ziegus?
Yes, and I'd like to add that, um, you know, this is gonna be a big expense and we are going to be hopefully pursuing grants so that we can repay some of these funds back if we do get some grants to help out with the infrastructure, because there are, there is a lot of money available for infrastructure, and all we need to do is pursue some grants from the federal government.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh. Any other comments from the sponsors?
Let me add something to that. And and I don't, I don't think we put that in the um in the appropriation, but we would, if we do get funding, we would like um uh to make sure, and I'll make an amendment, that that if we do receive funding, that we do pay back the riverboat. Thank you.
You got an amendment? Okay, okay, thank you. Uh, any comments from the public?
Mayor Perry? Duane Perry, Michigan City Mayor, I'd like to thank council members Deutsch, Dabney, and Ziegus for sponsoring this. They're also members of the ARPA committee. They understand uh how critical this is, especially considering that the delivery date that we have and still have on water material is seventy weeks. So thank you, the three of you, for pushing this forward. So thank you, the three of you for pushing this forward.
Thank you, Mayor Perry. Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council?
No for adoption.
Support. We have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Dyke and, uh, uh, second.
Yeah, I did.
Councilman, Councilman Dabney, uh, Councilman Prespelinsky.
I was Dabney, I yield to Dabney.
This was the second emotion to have heard.
Okay. No, I, I wanted to make a comment that I, uh, wanted to reiterate the fact that we had a workshop that I asked for. So we at least found and clarified the date that this needed to be in the ground or not even in the ground because we don't even know, because we never had the second workshop because I wanted to get ahold of the landowners and the people on the fiscal plan and what we're actually responsible there. So I think that we're gonna need to do that and, uh, I also am, uh, in support of moving ahead and, uh, ordering the, the, uh, the pipe that we need, but we also need to look at, um, I don't even know the correct name of the, uh, I don't know if it's a service study or what it is. Um, but I'm gonna clarify that with the water and sanitary district on what they really see, how much it's gonna cost, or if they did that. I don't know if it's a cost service study or exactly what it is. But the main thing is this, is that we need to do this so we do not incur a rate increase for the ratepayers. And that was my whole objective from the very beginning and it is now. And I think that, uh, using that art money for, for this is the direct purpose of that art money for water and sanitation. And I'm kinda disturbed about this other stuff coming here because more of that art money should be going to this project just like the other annexation that we did out on the east side of town. I believe it's on a hundred and forty-two acres. So I, I can, uh, see moving forward on this and, uh, because we definitely don't want to, uh, incur a rate increase for the ratepayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, were there any other comments?
Yeah, Mister President, excuse me. Yeah, Mister President, I'd, I'd like to have the, uh, city planner, Skyler York, come up and just explain a little bit to the public as a whole as to why we got into this situation here where we owe eight million dollars on infrastructure purposes for, uh, for this annexation that took place three years ago.
Good afternoon, council, and happy new year. Haven't had a chance to get before you, so, um, so I, I can't remember the day. If I want to say like twenty seventeen, is that, would that be? You're remembering that, right? Twenty seventeen, maybe? It's twenty eighteen. We, uh, did a annexation. We annexed approximately four hundred and twenty-nine acres of land in that area of town. Uh, it's composed of approximately, I think, nine landowners, a few very large landowners. Um, there is not a sewer main out there or a water main. Um, at that time, it was also a census year, so we actually gained an extra year because we couldn't, the annexation didn't take place till the January of the next year. So, um, at that time, it was, uh, contemplated that we would, um, we would annex the area in the fiscal plan. We would annex. We also would try to go for TIF, which we've done. We would also do, um, uh, I think there were some, uh, we'll, we'll commit to get the water sewer there in a three-year period. Um, at the time, there was, um, the, the anticipation of maybe there would be development there. Well, the, the, the problem is, is that there's not gonna be development without the water sewer. So it can't, it doesn't produce a TIF to go for a bond to, to, it's kind of a chicken or egg thing. So, um, so right now we're in a position where we really need to get the, uh, the water sewer there in anticipation of meeting our deadline or obligation as opposed to the fiscal plan. Um, uh, we're only, we're, I do believe we have a route that's been made. I don't know if all of the engineering's done, the capacity studies and things like that. It was also anticipated that the capacity would be more. Now we know a little bit more about that land. There's wetlands there that have been discovered during some other, um, uh, endeavors by other, you know, other, um, developers. Uh, so I think that's gonna affect your capacity as well. Um, hopefully in a positive way. Um, that's really all I can, all I know about it right now from a technical standpoint. I know it's a lot of land. Um, the idea was that the airport was gonna, was expanding, you know, that was one of the purposes. It's also makes sense. It's just right next to the city. Um, does it make, did it? Um, um, there, we went into it knowing that there wasn't, uh, you know, um, uh, sewer and water there. But, uh, uh, that was the direction that the city was going for at that time. So is, I could answer any other questions you might have about it. That's kind of a high, high view of it all. Anything specific, Don? Me and you spoke.
I just wanted to get a, uh.
Okay.
You know, a quick review, what took place, you know, the dates, things like that. For the general public, I mean, we're spending eight million dollars.
Absolutely.
We're spending two point five million dollars out of the riverboat fund, which is bringing that down to a, a, a balance now of two point five million dollars. The rainy day fund, uh, we're taking money out of the rainy day fund and now we're taking two point five out of ARPA money. So, you know, that's a, that's a lot of money to a city besides the Michigan city. Just want people to be aware of.
Absolutely.
Where the money's from.
Absolutely. And, you know, we've looked at other ways to do it. It, it just didn't make sense from a standpoint of, um, going a different direction in anticipation of, of a development. Um, things of that nature. This just made sense because, you know, we didn't wanna do anything on a, um, anticipation. We wanna make sure that we're being very calculated with our investments and this is a good investment.
Thank you, Scott.
You're welcome. If you have any other questions, I'll be.
Again, Scotty, what a good question.
Yeah.
So what could possibly happen if we did not?
That's, at that point in time, I do think if they should file, they could file suit with the city. At that point in time, I assume, if I'm speaking out of turn, please correct me, but I do believe they would have probably the right to file suit that, that we didn't meet our obligation. I've never seen that happen before, never experienced that, but I think they would have standing for it. So.
Uh, Councilman Prespelinsky.
Uh, I think that, uh, that question was addressed at, at the workshop with, uh, Mister Harris that he said that they could, even if you bought the pipe and had the pipe on order, because the pipe they're saying is gonna take six months to eight months to a year to deliver, that they could still file suit against us. And that's why it's important that the legal, the legal eagles and us contact the landowners and get some kind of agreement put together so that there is no suit. That, that's a, even if you ordered a pipe, they could do that. So this is, I'm telling you, so you know upfront. All right. Thank you.
Can we have a motion in a second? Miss Nala on the vote, please.
Miss Jigas.
Aye.
Mister Paul Prespelinsky.
Aye.
Miss Tillman.
Aye.
Mister Dabney.
Aye.
Mister Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mister Mack.
Aye.
Miss Dyke.
Aye.
Mister Don Prespelinsky.
Aye.
And Mister Simmons.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Miss Jigas. Can you read our next resolution, please?
A resolution by title only, sixth addition to the initial plan for the use of portion of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies for a fire truck. And this is introduced by Mister Dabney and Miss Jigas.
Any comments from the, uh, sponsors?
Councilman Dabney. Uh, real quick on this one, uh, we, through the ARPA committee, once again, we approved uh, money to be, uh, used by a fire truck. But on this one, I do have a question uh, regarding the funding source on this one. Why can we not use the lit, uh, money for this purchase? Uh, because like, as the ARP money is run out, once that's gone, it's gone. Uh, lit dollars will be collected on a yearly basis and that is for public safety. And I wanted, wondered if we can actually take that from the lit fund. Um, I know the total amount we're gonna have for the year, uh, that was given to us at a, a workshop before, about four point three million dollars. Um, so I'm wondering, can we switch the funding source over to use lit funds on this and, and preserve some of the ARP money on this one?
Any other, uh, oh. We responded to that. Okay.
Yeah.
Did I answer that?
Please. Yes, please.
Um, well, the fire chief is here also, but it was my understanding this was more of a timing issue that, um, because the fire trucks take so long to get, and we are in dire need of one at the moment, that we would look to this one for the ARPA funds so we could get this money appropriated and be able to purchase a truck. Um, the lit funds, we would have to wait until we actually received the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would still be several months from now before we could appropriate it. We would have to actually have the funds before we could appropriate.
Yeah, but my, my concern is the fact that we can, I know the riverboat as, as, as Councilman Don Prespel, like you say, we, we are down to two point seven million dollars in the riverboat. Um, but if we did use riverboat funds and then once lit money comes in, we can reimburse that. I don't know if we can reimburse ARP funds and.
Um, no, we cannot reimburse the ARP funds, the ARPA funds. And, um, I, I did receive an email from Baker Tilly confirming that, so I will forward that email off to the council. But we would be able, if, um, if we did purchase the truck from the riverboat, we would be able to use the lit funds to revert, reimburse the riverboat for those funds.
And I like, I like that option better than, uh, to plead eight fifty from the AR, uh, ARPA funds.
Councilwoman Judge.
Since we have a control of half of my, is it all right? Can I ask a question? I, I know we haven't gone public comment, but that was the other part of it. I already asked that question if we could be reimbursed from the riverboat. And we talked about that at the ARPA committee and, and reimbursing the riverboat fund for this as well.
Right. And I just, I just received that email from Baker Tilly.
Well, not ARPA. We talked about ARPA and riverboat.
Right. And, but I had said at the committee that we could reimburse the riverboat.
Okay, okay.
I did say that at the committee meeting.
Okay, I wanted to confirm that because that was the thing. And I think, um, Councilwoman Jigas, we both had that comment. She said, why wouldn't we do that? And you still, it's still here before it's in ARPA. So we still can get the, we still can pass it and get it. I just wanna make sure when Chief Legault comes up, he gives us all the timing information.
Well, sorry. Okay, so, uh, any comments from the public?
Yeah, Tommy Klopik, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. Now, we're putting a billion dollars in for the, the double track and then the, the Westlake corridor includes this eighty million dollar edifice we're putting up at Eleventh Franklin. Uh, well, we, the city had to already pony up a million bucks to have the quiet zones. It's all to take the people to, uh, people to and from the witty city. You know, now we need to get these fire trucks for the, the residents that inhabit the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Klopik. Chief Legault.
Chief Double Goal, Michigan City Fire. First, I want to thank all of you for your hard work and trying to figure this out. I know it's not easy. So, uh, we did speak with, uh, salesmen today, actually, reps, uh, that sell fire truck. He's indicating same thing as he's been telling me all along, um, to build a truck is twenty-two to twenty-four months. So it's a two-year project. Uh, they do have demos. I call them spec trucks. They don't have miles on them. They're spec trucks, demo trucks, whatever you wanna call them. Uh, we just missed out on one. There was one that was exactly what we were looking for. Uh, and he stated that once they list it, I think he listed it, uh, this month on the second, it was sold by the ninth. So seven days it was listed and it got sold before it even got built. So that's what we're looking at. There's another one coming up. He's hoping that they're gonna list it next month and that would be available in June. So, uh, it is a timing thing. Uh, we're replacing a two thousand and seven truck. You already know that. Sixteen-year-old fire truck. So that's why we're trying to get this done as soon as possible. And once again, I appreciate your hard work and trying to figure this out, but we do need a truck. Any other questions I can answer? I'll be happy to.
Yeah. Questions? Uh, Councilwoman, uh, right, Councilman, uh, Prespelinsky.
Uh, Chief Legault.
Yes, sir.
We've had many, uh, discussions about the, the vehicles and, and different things at the, uh, fire department. And I, I would like to know, um, you have a truck down in Louisville, is that correct? Or you did?
St. Louis.
St. Louis. And it's being examined.
Correct.
Or correct. And was, uh, could you tell the council exactly the problems with that truck?
I just got an update today from Chief Rebeck on that because, uh, in case that question came up, um, that was sent down there because we've been having multiple problems with it over the last few years, electronic problems. There's twenty six computers, I think, on that truck. Um, and what they found out was they found some electrical connections. I don't know the exact details on that, but they did find some electrical problems that they have fixed. And since we've had it down there, since it was down there, we, uh, asked them to, there's some warranty issues on some paint. So they're actually doing that right now and he's expecting it to be done here in next week or so.
So how old is that truck that's down in, uh?
That's a twenty sixteen, I believe.
It's a twenty sixteen?
Uh, I can, hold on a second. I don't wanna miss culture. Twenty fifteen, I'm sorry.
Twenty fifteen?
Twenty fifteen.
Okay, so now that truck ended up down there to get maintenance on and, uh, then recently, then in the not too distant past, that both the ladder trucks were out of service and you had a cold, cold spring and for a mutual, uh, your mutual aid request?
No, that's not entirely correct. I.
Well, wait a minute. Uh, answer the question.
I'm, I'm going to if you let me.
And you're saying it's not entirely?
But I'm going to finish. So if you let me finish, I don't, I think you'll understand my answer. You stated that I called them for mutual aid. I did not call them for mutual aid. I put them on standby.
Okay.
When we had two trucks that were down for about an hour.
Yeah, but the point is, is that the trucks were down. All right. So what's more important? Getting a new ladder or getting this pumper? That's what I'm getting at. And I wa, I was wanting to have a workshop with you, you know, and not, and not bring it up tonight, but since we're here.
I'm all for that. Anytime you, I mentioned that to everybody several times. Anytime you wanna talk to me, I'm more than, uh, welcome and available. So, um, right now we need a pumper. We will have that truck back. We have the ninety-five backup ladder truck, which has proven to be pretty reliable, but we can't rely on it forever. So that'll be our next purchase. Will be an, uh, aerial unit.
Okay.
Uh, Councilwoman Tillman.
I just wanted to clarify. So this resolution, is it gonna be amended? I'm, I'm in the agreement as well, uh, with Councilman Dabney. If we're able to use the lit, preferably should be, um, and for the lit to, um, reimburse the riverboat. So with that amendment.
I think we got to use the riverboat initially and then reimburse the riverboat.
But will that be amended in this?
We just. No, that, uh, uh, what are you, what?
So, so will this amendment be, I'm sorry, this resolution be amended?
Uh, uh, amendment would have to be submitted to the clerics.
Okay.
If we're not going to use the ARPA funds for this truck, you can pull this resolution from the agenda.
That's right.
Okay.
Uh is that the?
You can either pull it or you can just vote it down.
However, is that going to, uh sorry? Is that going to slow down our process?
I, I, I don't think I have an answer for that. I would say yes. I would say yes. Yeah, at least two weeks.
So, cuz we. No, we're on.
I think we're still on public comment. Is there any more comments from the public?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, we just start asking.
Uh Mayor Perry. Just a side note, Mr. President, not about the fire truck. But um it's vitally important. That since the majority of the community doesn't have a grasp of the numbers or an understanding like. We here in this room do, that the numbers be, everything be stated correctly. This is for Mr. Klawick, who came in and said the city just dumped a billion dollars on the double track. It's a billion-dollar project. But the cost is being borne fifty percent by the federal government. Fif- and the other fifty percent is between the state of Indiana. The four counties, Lake, Porter, La Porte, and Saint Joe. And the cities involved that have stations along the line. So we're not dumping a, a billion dollars. Uh let's not create a sense of panic that there's not any money left. Let's just understand our numbers before we come in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Perry. I think everybody understands we had a billion dollars. I don't think we'd be wearing about eight hundred dollar truck. Eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh are there any comments from the uh, any more comments from the public?
Just a quick one, uh Chief Steve Forker, Michigan City Police Department. Obviously, this public safety lit tax affects obviously Chief Legault, Fire Department, Michigan City Fire Department and. Myself and the Michigan City Police Department. Just one thing that I, you know, I just, I hear this and I feel like, you know, we're talking eight hundred or fifty. Thousand dollars, which is nearly about a fourth of that money that we're expected to see. Uh so I would do my, my, members of my department disservice if I didn't say something that I feel that some of that stuff. Uh needs to start, we're gonna start appropriating things that needs to be really thought about. Uh the salaries that, in which we are and that we're currently behind cer- uh. Surrounding cities and municipalities who are already taking that lit tax money and seeing fifty percent raises, twenty-five percent raises. And so on and so forth, so I just wanna make that known as well. So we're already behind the eight ball in that. I'd love to see that as well.
Uh thank you, thank you, Chief Forker. Was there any more comments from the public? Any more comments from the public? Comments from the council? Council.
So, so I'm just trying to figure out the logistics here. I mean, we have. Coming up, we have the ordinance for this and so we can amend that on second reading, but if we don't pass. The corresponding, if you will, a resolution, how does this go? So, so we can pass this resolution, but then amend the ordinance on second reading?
Uh I'll make a kind, can I answer? So um the, this is art for the ARPA plan, so that res- that, that ordinance is for the ARPA fund. It's not for the riverboat fund, so those are correlating, so there, you can't disconnect, they're, they're connected. So we will have to bring forth a different appropriation of the vehicle. Um I don't know if we can just amend because it has to be pu- it has to go through the paper because it has to have a public hearing. So what will happen is it could come on the next agenda as an appropriation. February and then we can do a second and third reading in February at the second council meeting. Um and what it sounds like from Chief Legault is that um. That's about the timing for it to come out anyway. Um as far as the, the next demo, uh but we have um. Received uh, haven't received some money from um the public lit tax already. So I don't know, Chief Legault, if um. If, is it paid in full? Does it have to be paid in full at the time of um purchase? Or how does that work? But I mean, we'll have the riverboat funds. But it has to go through a public hearing, formal public hearing.
It's uh basically, it was told to me with this specific company we're talking about today, or I was talking with today, actually. Um there's nothing upfront other than a PO, just a commitment to buy and then it's paid on delivery. Hundred percent.
Four months.
No, uh this would be hopefully, uh you said Ju- June or July? I can't remember now. I wrote it down. June, I believe. You said it would come off the line.
And, and the other option is to, and I'm just gonna say it, a special meeting since we have five weeks in this month.
But I would have to, I would have to commit a hundred percent.
Right, but I'm saying if we had a special meeting for the first reading.
Oh, we have to do that, yeah.
Second and third reading at the council meeting still, we just have to publicize it. In the, in the timeframe that it has to be for the, the council meeting. I'm just, this is another option and you still can get it done at the first council meeting in February, so.
Yeah.
Chief, couple questions. So the difference between. The, your spec truck that you want and the demo.
No, it's the same truck. I like to call it a spec truck cuz when you say demo, you think of somebody out demoing it and driving around. But I call it a spec truck. What, what the company does is they pick out the most popular type of truck. And they'll spec that truck. They build it to specifications.
That you want.
It's real close. Yeah, it's exactly what we, I can't say exactly what we want, but the closer you're gonna get to a spec truck, correct. So that's gonna be, hopefully, we just missed out on the one. Uh they're gonna do a clone to it, if you might say, a very similar truck, he said. That he's hoping they will list it in uh beginning of next month. February seventh, he says, is the possible listing day, so I have to commit before somebody else does. It's first come, first served. And like I said, it took them seven days to sell the last one. They listed this one this month on the second and I think it sold on the ninth, he said.
Okay, so then this truck will be ready in June.
Then it will come off the line in June and that's when you pay for it. But if I commit to it in February, I, I have to be able to commit without putting.
Right, now getting back, getting back to this other truck. This fifteen-year-old truck, this pumper that you wanna get rid of.
Two thousand and seven.
Yeah, yeah.
Engine two.
Okay, now, when it comes to vehi- when it comes to trucks, fire trucks, mobile equipment, things like that. I know that there's always a year associated to everything is what, when it was manufactured. But how many man-hours are on that truck? I mean, engine hour, not man-hours, but engine hours are on that truck.
I would have to check on that, Councilman. I'm sorry.
Is there a specification in the fire industry to say, hey, there's so many hours? That can be on this vehicle before you need to get rid of it?
When you, mostly that has to deal with aerial units. You can only put so many hours on an aerial unit, on the aerial itself. So on ladder trucks, say, they really, we really watch the hours on ladder trucks for service and repair. Uh uh the hours on the uh pumps, I'm not sure on. I'd have to check.
Find that out.
Yes, uh I do know NFPA recommends ten years on a pumper.
Okay.
So we're at year sixteen.
Okay.
And that's, uh I stated. I used that argument at one of my other meetings where. They, they picked that number for a reason because what happens after that ten years, just things start breaking and we had that, I did that exact truck break down in a structural fire. And I talked to the mechanics after they worked on it and asked them, you know, what's the condition of the inside of that trans? The uh pump housing, and he said, actually, these parts that broke usually don't break. It just happened because of age. The parts that usually break, they look pretty decent, but you just can't tell. So that's when I decided to come to you and I gave you that replacement program. I put in there ten years for pumps, fifteen years for aerials. That would put our twenty fifteen aerial, the one that Councilman Paul Preslinsky brought up. A replacement in twenty thirty, so. That's why I'm stating we need a pump now, not an aerial, cuz that aerial should be good till twenty thirty.
Oh, I know it, oh.
So, uh but, yeah, I'm done. Thank you. Just really quick, I, I do recall when we were having, going through the workshops and stuff when. The lit tat was being proposed by the county and we were, you know, going back and forth about. Whether we would be in support of it or not. I, I do remember it being sold to us as something to use for. Recruitment and salaries and that the concern was that we would end up using it for equipment and here we are. Discussing using it for equipment when we do have the ARPA funds, we do have the riverboat funds. It was just something that I, it just. You know, recollection just came to me, so, and, and also comments from Chief Forker, so.
The, the lit tax was um. In my eyes was to be used for anything public safety, so you could use it for salaries, you can use it for equipment, you can use it for training. You can use it for whatever you choose to use it for, as long as it's, so. I don't.
The undertone, but the, the, the headline for, the pitch to us was, you need this for recruitment and retention. And not equipment. I was just putting that back out there, uh Councilman Preslinsky.
Um I, I would like to ask the authors to pull the uh. Resolution in the uh as suggested, which I was thinking the same thing as suggested by uh. Councilwoman Dyche in the uh. Um ordinance also this evening and then at our next regular meeting. We could have that uh in, in place because. This is what I thought about all along and I'm glad to hear about this ruling by Baker Tilly. Cuz I was talking to some individuals about it was tax money in that. It's not out of the property tax and that you could move their monies around to each other's fund. You know, so that was clarified tonight. And also I would like to ask the controller as how much money is in that um safety lit tax? As of this, as of now, because it was collected for three months in. Um twenty twenty-two, so what's our balance in that right now? We should have three months' balance in there.
Yep, we received our first distribution last week and it was three hundred and sixty-some thousand dollars.
For?
So that's what's in the fund as of today.
For one month?
Well, that's all we've received.
Okay, well, did it say on it? Was it for one month or?
It just said the January distribution.
Okay. All right, well, uh I think the uh, there's somebody in the county that would know exactly. Because I was told that it was for three months, so. Ri- right, but that's why I figured it wasn't gonna be paid till the first of the year, you know? So I have to check that out. There should be more than that or expected monies.
What's that emotion by Councilman?
No motion.
I, I do have a question. But we get, we get all of our um local income tax on a monthly basis, don't we? You, you don't have to get up if you just wanna nod your head. Yeah, so, so this is just the same as all of our, our um other local income tax. We just get it monthly. They just collect it for the three months, but now we start getting it monthly. And that's, that's what I understood, like the other ones, cuz we get a couple of different ones, don't we? Three of them, and I guess the only other thing is with the lit and, and um though we. I, I do have an ordinance that will be coming that I'm working on right now. I just haven't given it to the attorneys yet on um. Putting some buckets together for the lit for salary perf and um capital and some type of reserve. Um so it'll be on the next agenda, um but. I understand what Chief Forker is saying too, um but that truck is about eighteen percent. But for those large, large purchases, I see lit is the, is the perfect place for it because it's. It's almost a million dollars. It's um, it's a lot to put into a budget. You know, um but I think that's why having some type of reserve as we move forward with the lit. That way, when things come up or break for real or break down, um we'll have that, that money. Uh from the lit that can be set aside and um for future um planning purposes anyway, as we move forward. And that, and I think that's, that's the only thing I got right now. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council? Councilman Dabney.
Yeah, um and I was just, you know, sitting recalling that. And I, I asked our attorney, he said that we, we can't do it, but we, we, we have called a recess before. Where people have gone up, grabbed a piece of paper, written up a, an amendment and then come back and we read it to the record. Um and I was wondering, and I asked him, could we do that? He said no. Uh but we have done that before, where we asked for a recess and somebody ran out, grabbed some paper and writ- and wrote down a uh, something to be submitted.
But.
But I think this has had, this has been published, though. I think that's the issue, isn't it? It is that we could do that if it wasn't something that was appropriation related or published in, in the newspaper as such.
Can you save it to the mic?
Sorry about that. I'm used to looking at folks, um. For a.
Is it on?
It is, it is, okay. Okay. Right now, I feel really on spot. For a um, for a published budgeting. You can't, um depending on the funding source, simply make an on-the-fly amendment. Uh there has to be a certain amount of public notice that goes out ahead of time. Uh again, depending on the funding source uh for budgeting purposes. That's why you can't simply. Call a brief recess and then change the, change the funding source, come back and say, ah, this is what it is now. Um that's the purpose of having the public notice go out at a certain amount of time uh pursuant to the open records uh and open meetings as well.
Okay, so just for clarity, so things that are financial in nature have to go with what was supposed to be public. And can't be amended on the fly, cuz I, I agree with, I know we've done that before, like you take a piece of paper and hand it to the. Because per our rules, anything that's submitted has to be in writing to the clerk, so. There's no specification on when that has to happen, so if it wasn't financial in nature, we could do that, but since it is, then we can't.
Right, that, that, that would be. There, there, that runs into another issue because you finalize the agenda prior to starting with all other.
If we, but uh, we've had the, the council agree to do that, to make amendments.
Okay, um.
Not financially, I'm just saying. We may have been wrong. Clear it up now, we'll, we'll know going forward, but.
This, this is what we can do, uh i- if the council's okay with it. We can draft a memorandum for the council. Uh to kinda give a guide for exactly how financial uh. Financial resolutions, financial ordinances, and financial appropriations. Uh should go forward if there is an amendment that the council seeks to make, the exact steps that the council should go through. Uh without speaking to anything that has been done in the past. Um we can just kind of draft a memorandum for the future.
To our rules. So.
For uh a process that will be compliant with council rules, of course, but uh most important.
State, station. Okay, thank you.
Point order. Um for the good of the order, uh. From my recollections of Robert Rules of Order, that. From my recollections of Robert Rules of Order, that once you're discussing the subject item. You cannot recess unless it's in uh. Unless to do that issue on. You know, writing amendment or something, you have to go through it, or put it on the table and come back to it. Yeah, you can't just do that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, any other comments from the council? Councilwoman Jigus.
Uh, there was some talk of us, you know, pulling this resolution. However, I, unless I know for certain there's gonna be a special meeting and facilitating this funding, you know. I I'm not willing to do that, because I really am worried about the timing of this whole process.
I don't know, it depends on what the support for it is, uh, in its current form, so.
I have a question.
Councilman Dyche.
What, how, how many days is a public notice, is it two weeks, um, uh, Clark Nyla, what's the, the timeframe?
Depending on if we're looking for quotes or bids, um, usually ten days prior, I.
Ten business days.
Do some of all the appropriations will be in uh, the paper tomorrow.
Okay.
I ready, put them in.
Okay.
The next meeting.
So, uh, because what I was looking for is this, how long, like if, so is, is it too late? I'm just trying to look at my calendar, is it too late? If. We called, I'm trying to figure out for the next meeting. That would be, if we did a special meeting, that would be a second reading, but it wouldn't be enough time to do.
Right, because it's only two weeks away.
Yeah, it's only two weeks away.
Dispatch, I'd be lucky if I could get it today's Tuesday, by Friday.
Right, okay, got it.
But we do have an extra week. Right.
Mister Chair.
That's, oh, that's right, so that's what I was looking at.
And the Herald Dispatch was pretty good.
I I uh, my comments earlier about uh, you know, pulling this off the table. Was um. Because I think the ARP money, we could use it for those sewer projects. Or a water project or something, something like that, because we have the money, we're gonna have the money. And uh, from the lit, and that, y- you know, financially. I I think it's more beneficial for us to leave that ARP money and use it for water and sewer. Because we still got that project out on the east side by uh, on twenty to do that yet. And then we have to spend money and costs on the uh, plan, on the uh. Uh, engineering plan for the water and sewer, so there would be money there to pay for that. At from, for the water in uh, the sanitation department to do their, I don't know what, what they call it, their engineering study. Or, you know, to engineer the project, because they haven't done that yet, from what I've been told. You know, they just put out these, this, like a service map. So then if that eight hundred and fifty was left in there, we'd be better off uh, to help uh. And move that project going to get that done, that, that engineering, is that, excuse me. Is that what it's called, Skylar Engineering on the project for the water and sewer? Oh, Mike's here.
I, I, Mike, I would defer to Mister Michael.
What is that, what is that called, is that called a service study?
Or an engineering study?
Mike Malathrich, General Manager, Detective District of Michigan City, Preliminary Engineering Report.
Preliminary Engineering, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so is there a. Okay, I don't know if this is out of order, but. I was just gonna say this. Next Tuesday works for anybody to, for everyone to do a special meeting, if we were to. If the authors were to. Uh, withdraw their support and then we reconvene in a week to redo this. Would that, would that work, would that satisfy the uh, the time? Mr. Nile.
I don't have a calendar in front of me, but I'll try to get it in.
Yes, now that's only seven days.
Be seventeenth, I'll try to get it in there the thirteenth, and then we could have second and third reading.
At the first meeting.
Today's the seventeenth.
So we have to do it on thirty-first?
No, no.
Meeting is until the.
So you do, we have to do it by the twenty-fourth.
On the twenty-fourth?
Yeah, as long as we do it by the twen- twenty-fourth.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I need the appropriation of what I'm gonna do tomorrow.
By, by noon?
Yeah. I.
Okay, yeah.
I'll make, I'll make a motion then for something, I I do have a question, um. For the controller, if we do that, would you be able to change that appropriation and get it to Amber and? Um, in the morning, if if the mayor um, is, is okay with it by noon? Because we will have to call the special meeting, but the appropriation still has to come from through the administrations, or, you know, the administration.
Oh, so you're not gonna do first reading in, the first meeting in February and second and third?
We're gonna do the first, we're gonna create a special meeting for next week. To do the first reading, so we can do second and third at the first meeting, if we were to change it to the riverboat. So we still would get it done at that meeting. But we have to have enough time for the, the public hearing, the publication in the newspaper. So we will have to have it by Tuesday of next week, since we have that extra week this month.
Um. Yes.
And is there a way, should, and I have to ask this of the ca- of council. Can we move to extend the, the deadline to the end of the day tomorrow? Or we, because we have a process where it's noon on Wednesday?
For the special meeting.
For, for our typical meetings.
We're gonna have it tomorrow, we're doing a special meeting.
So we don't have to, we just gotta have it regular time?
Yeah, because I need to get it in the paper and I need, we have to do that special all, so I'm going.
Okay.
The president as well.
All right, thank you. If we do that tonight before everyone leaves.
It's, you don't, you don't want me to say what, do you?
Okay.
Okay.
So, what's the will of the council? Oh, so we are calling a special meeting on Tuesday, six thirty? Tuesday, the twenty-fourth. At six thirty. Agenda to follow.
Don't forget, we have Planning Commission that night, oh, in here, uh, at six o'clock that day.
Five o'clock work for everyone?
It'll be hybrid too.
Okay, I just wanted to throw that out there for now, just knowing.
Thank you.
Hybrid.
Votes won't count on Sunday, I'll just.
Oh, it's appropriation.
We can do it, right?
But that's first reading, it's first reading.
Right, we're not gonna.
We're not doing any votes, it's first reading.
Okay, so, special meeting on, so would this be a notification? Would this satisfy that? That I'm calling a special meeting on. I'll, I'll give it to you in writing, but uh, special meeting on January twenty-fourth at five o'clock. At five P M, agenda to follow.
Okay.
Does that work? Okay, so is there a?
So I moved to remove my support for the resolution as stated.
Okay, Councilwoman Jigus moves to remove her support. Councilman Dabney, are you?
Uh, do we need a support for that, or? Okay, I I pull my sponsorship of the uh.
Okay, Councilwoman uh, Dabney is also pulling this support, so does anyone else wish to pick up this support for this resolution? Evan, and this resolution does for lack of support. Okay, moving on. Can we take a, uh?
Thank you to all.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess. Okay, we're gonna move on, uh, other council members will get back to their seats. So, um. It's not our next or, uh, res- resolution.
A resolution by title only, it's sixth edition to the initial plan for use of portion of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds. Through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies for the park improvements, and this is introduced by Mister Dabney and Miss Jacobs.
Any comments from the sponsors?
So I think uh, Superintendent Ed Shin is here to talk about uh, some of the requests here. So he can clarify, sorry about that.
Good evening, Ed Shin, Superintendent of the Parks, One Hundred East Michigan Boulevard. And I provided a packet for everybody to see illustration of one of the items.
You continue.
You will see, thank you. You will see there are three items that the Park Department is concerned about and would like ARPA funds to assist. One is the remodel project at the Senior Center. The other project is the fencing at Patriot Park, and the third item is a truck to replace. Pickup truck used at Patriot Park that pulls a trailer and handles heavy loads. And takes care of three baseball fields.
Thank you, uh, Mister Shin, any uh, comments from the authors? We'll go to uh, public comment, comments from the public.
Yeah, Tommy Claude, we need to get an update on the splash pad. I know we're gonna change, I'll use all new supply and drainage, I know we're changing over from a chlorine-based system to a freshwater system. You know, we put that in, I mean, back probably like in two thousand eight, when I remember when Mayor Hopperley was, was in. Then we spent like a million dollars, we tore out the tennis courts out there, and we only got about nine seasons out of it. We'd like to get, where we're at with that, thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Like it.
Ernie Howahan, three oh two Gladys Street, uh. Is this including Brock uh, Water Tower Park? No, that's, that's not included in there. Okay, I I know either, they put those fifteen mile an hour speed limit signs up there. And uh, they're not helping. I'm sitting at the stop sign there, and a car coming the other way just flew right by me. Through the stop sign, never even stopped. So, if they're not. Being patrolled, they're not gonna abide by them. And the one that uh. One at uh, Cleveland, uh, Springlin out. They put up out there, one of them doesn't work, they had to put a fifteen mile an hour speed limit back up. But they don't, they don't abide by it there either, so.
Thank you, Mr.
And like I said, if they're not patrolled, they're not gonna abide by it.
Thank you, any comments to, for the public on this resolution? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council?
Council President. Yeah, yes, Ken, Superintendent, because he, he did a good job, they explained this to us in, in a committee meeting, and I know you're just getting this right now. Um, but the, the Patriot Park, um, the fencing, can you kind of explain that a little bit so that the council understands why, um. Why the need with the frost and everything, because we got to hear it at our meeting, but everybody else didn't.
Well, for one thing, the fencing at Patriot Park is a little bit different than the fencing that might be installed at your home. This fencing takes a beating, uh, there's a high volume of activity there. This fencing has been hit with vehicles, it's been dragged and hit with drags and mowers. Uh, we have found pitchers pitching their baseballs for practice into the fence, which will. Uh, cause problems with the fencing itself, the fencing after twenty-five years will curl. But the main problem with that fence is the high-water table at that property and the. Material of clay that is, this fence is built on. Uh. The problem with the foundation of this fencing is that it was not installed below the frost line. So the freeze thaw effect will cause the foundation of the fence. To heave, and as you can see in the photo, it has risen probably twelve to fifteen inches in some places. So that mainly is the problem with the fencing, and the gates uh, take the same beating and have the same effect from the freeze thaw. System, the ga- there's not a gate that swings on the property, uh. The problem also with the backstops that are probably. Twenty, eighteen to twenty feet in the air are leaning, the picture doesn't do justice to that, but those. Can be pretty dangerous, and I'm. Afraid of what that's gonna, what's gonna happen in the future with those backstops. Again, it's a twenty-five-year-old fence.
Uh, Superintendent Shin, are, are there any other parks that uh, have similar issues out of, how many parks do we have total?
We have, Gardena has two baseball fields with fencing and backstops, and I don't see that problem at those fields. That's on a sandy soil, the water penetrates, and the freeze thaw effect is not severe. And I'm guessing that the installation was supervised and the foundations were poured three foot down.
Um, Councilwoman Tillman.
Uh, my comment is in regards to the um, vehicle.
Okay.
And um. The way that this is worded, so I'm ta- I'm interpreting this as. This particular truck will be mainly used for Patriot Park, but Patriot Park is far, eh, it's not a. Yearly park, and it's usually during baseball season, so when it's not in season, will this truck be utilized in other areas?
Correct, this.
For other parks?
This truck will also be hauling equipment to Gardena. And Trail Creek, those are the fields that this truck will also be pulling trailers and equipment and people to, but you're asking on the off-season?
Yes.
This truck in the off-season will be used in the other parks.
And but. But again, in off-season, that's pretty much all of the other parks, so if it's off-season, then how would that truck be utilized?
Well, that truck could be utilized for things as far as installing the Christmas lights, hauling materials for the Christmas lights. The actual features themselves, hauling from, the Christmas lights are stored at the maintenance broad, at the maintenance shop. And they have to be hauled back and forth.
And is this vehicle um, used for transportation um, during regular work hours or a take-home vehicle?
Regular work hours or what?
Take-home vehicle.
Or not a take-home vehicle, no.
Thank you.
Uh, Council, Councilman President.
Yeah, a couple of questions, uh, number one with the uh, the vehicle. Uh, what exactly is wrong? With the vehicle that's, that it's deemed unsafe, what is wrong with the truck? It's deemed unsafe?
That would be the frame, I have been showing pictures, the frame underneath, it will not pull the load of a trailer. And was deemed unsafe by Cranston Harris not to be used on the roads.
Okay. Is it being used?
Not to be used at all, no, I doubt that it's being used at all, it, it can't be.
Okay, uh, the fence.
with the condition of the concrete even out of the ground here, and I don't know who plans on doing the installation, but are we gonna get a warranty with the work?
I think it would be wise, I think it would be wise to get a warranty and have some supervision there measuring the depth of the excavation.
Okay, are you gonna get a warranty for this work?
I'm sure there'll be a warranty. I would make sure that there would be a warranty.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, because when you get the warranty, I'd like to, because that lays out to the Park Department, I'd like to have a copy of it. Yeah. And then what they're, because I've never seen this. I never seen this before.
That's right.
It's not like one pole or two poles. It's every pole in the field.
That's right.
Out of the ground.
You have to remember that that is a
Oh, except for some, this one here is not.
Project that was built on a high water table.
Oh, yeah, I know, I know. And I I should say, not every, it says the, I see the outfield pole. Outfield poles are out, but not the in, around the infield, hearing a thud on, I don't see that. But, you know, whatever. Yeah, I'd love to see a warranty come with that. Yeah, not a two or three year warranty, maybe a you know, twenty year warranty that they say that this isn't gonna happen.
Thank Councilman President, Councilman Dyche.
Move for adoption.
Support.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. I just have real, one real quick question, and this is because of the comment about the vehicle being used for the other baseball diamonds. So Adams Park, which is basically my backyard and in the fourth ward, which I represent. Is there a plan for those two abandoned baseball diamonds?
It's that park has been discussed to possibly being created into a wetland?
I can talk about Adams Park.
I'm sorry?
I can answer about the Adams Park. So there's going to be, I think, I believe the sanitary district got funding for uh the conversion of that park to mostly wetlands, walking trails, because the community did not really want baseball and things happening there. It was swampy land anyway, they couldn't even mow the grass, so there's a pretty big project, but I believe sanitary is involved in converting part of that to wetlands and and walking trails, and then I think they were gonna maintain parking lot, so I so there's a project underway, and it's, you know, they're not gonna keep baseball diamonds there.
Yeah, because it's just, I get calls about it all summer long. Because the grass is two feet long, and then there's rodents and all kind of insects all around, so. Okay. Okay, thanks. We have a motion and a second. Councilwoman President.
I got one quick question for the superintendent.
In regards to this resolution?
In regards to this resolution, did you, are, how come? Are you planning on taking in quotes for this truck? I mean, you're not I don't see any quotes here in the packet.
Yes, planning on taking bids for the truck.
So it could be lower than what you're getting because you're gonna get a half ton, I presume?
I would think we would need a three quarter ton for this item that's gonna be pulling this equipment.
Okay, so with that being said, are you, are you gonna put any additional get snow removal equipment on it if you're gonna get a three quarter ton?
Pat, were you planning on snow removal? Good question, because we could use another one with a snowplow.
Okay, well, I think that you know, that's one of the things that doesn't seem to get discussed, so. I I would support if you guys do a, give a new quote, if you need additional money to go with a three quarter ton. You know, because I think it lasts longer too, you know?
I agree.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman President. Do we have a motion and a second? It's not a vulnerable.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick. Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
And Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you very much, Council. I would like to answer the questions from the public, if that's okay. Regarding the splash pad?
Sure.
Is that okay? I just contacted the contractor that's going to do the conversion work on the splash pad. All the items were ordered to make this conversion, half the equipment came in, and they're gonna get started as soon as the rest of the equipment comes in or right before. And it can't be too soon that they get a lot of the work done, because the water has to be turned on once the freeze is over with for the season, but you will, you will be able to use the splash part this year.
There's gonna be a target date for open, brand open?
I can't guarantee a target date because of the supply chain issues. And as far as the fast drivers in our park, I don't like fast drivers either, so all we can do is call the police when you can, because they do a good job every time I call them, okay? Okay, and thank you, Council.
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent Shin. Ms. Nyla, next resolution.
A resolution by title only, sixth addition to initial plan for use of portion of the city's allotment of the local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies to or a street loader, and this is introduced by Ms. Deitch. Uh Mr. Dabney and Ms. Jacobs.
Any comments from the authors? Councilman Dabney. Oh, no, that was just any comments from the authors? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilman President.
Um I was told that the the need is great for this piece of equipment and that the loader that they have now is pretty much out of its useful life, but it it's the superintendent said that this is the piece that they're looking at is will suit their needs very much, and and you know, that's, that's a really a basic piece of equipment for the street department for all, everything they do. You know, from leaf to tree and, you know, day to day, even snow removal with that loader, that loader is always in use. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council?
Yes. Move for adoption.
Support.
We have a motion to adopt and second, uh by motion by Councilwoman Dyche and second by Councilwoman President. Um Ms. Nyla want to vote?
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you very much. Can you read our final resolution?
A resolution by title only, the sixth edition of the initial plan.
The one that we amended and added.
Oh, I forgot about that. I'm like, why do I have this? Okay. Um a resolution by title only approving submission of application for a grant for the City of Michigan City from the Indiana Department of Transportation for the twenty twenty-three Community Crossing Matching Grant Program and supporting the local match for said grant, and this is introduced by Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. And quickly, this is a compliance with ordinance we passed to before any grant is applied for, has to come before the council board, if we're gonna be obligated to match any funds, so. I don't know if there's any other questions with that. If not, we'll go to public comment. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilwoman Dyche.
So are these streets from our, I know we just did the last list, and I don't have the list, because I will have to look for it in my email. So is this from that same list of that, the long list of streets? So this, we, I know we just did one, and then when will we find this one out? Is this the one that we find out in the summertime if we get it?
Probably be right spring.
Late spring if they find out. And the match, do you anticipate us getting, taking this from Riverboat?
No, it's
I'm just trying to, I didn't, I'm looking, I'm trying to.
We're looking at the match from the MVH restricted fund.
The restricted fund.
Yeah, that those, that can only be used for road improvement and maintenance.
Thank you, because I know that the the public can't see this, so since we have it, so it's gonna come from our MVH, not from our Riverboat. And the streets that we're gonna do. Let me get back to it, are Woodland Park, Woodland, Baltimore Street, Southwood Drive, Grove Street, Barker Avenue, Chestnut Street. That's all, and thank you.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Tillman.
Second.
And a second by Councilwoman Dyche. Ms. Nyla want to vote?
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Can you please read our first ordinance on first reading?
An ordinance on first reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Riverboat and Randy Day Funds for infrastructure, water and sewer extension to the annexed property on the city seaside, and this is introduced by Ms. Deitch.
This is the the ordinance that I mentioned earlier in reference to the annexed property where it's two point five million from both fund and two point five million from the Randy Day Fund.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dyche. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the council? Councilwoman, I mean, Councilwoman Simmons.
Yes, I'd like to be added to this ordinance.
Councilman Matt. Any other comments from the council? Councilman President.
I I also would like to be a co-sponsor on this particular ordinance.
Any other comments from the council? This ordinance be held over for a second reading. Um Ms. Nyla, can you read our next ordinance on first reading?
Ordinance on first reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Engineer Department of the General Fund for on-call engineering services, approving additional appropriations in the budget of the Engineer Department of General Fund for on-call engineering services with Hassan Associates and Primera Engineering for twenty twenty-three, and this is also introduced by Ms. Deitch.
Comments from the author?
Yeah, so and I I do have a couple of questions for our controller and and maybe the Board of Works, the mayor. So this is in reference, historically, I just wanted to point out to the council too that even though we've had a engineer in the past, and we don't now, we always had money typically budgeted for on-call services, so this is not out of the ordinary to have funds available for on-call services, but my question is this was already approved at the Board of Works last month in December, and it seems like we're starting to do this a little bit more often than not, that we're making approvals before we do the appropriation. Unless I'm incorrect, and I just want to make sure that this isn't something that we start doing on a regular basis, because it's out of order, but my question um is, is, are we gonna have any more appropriations, and why don't we budget something in the budget for this service, because we have on-call all the time? I mean, I, let me say, I don't know, since we've been on here, how much we spent on-call, but when I was on the council before and the council before this one, even with the engineer, we had on-call services, so have we not been budgeting historically for the last, in our council term? I just missed that line item that we, we haven't been budgeting the on-call? And is this enough? Is my, is my next question?
Yep, and I will take the blame for this. It was just an oversub, the twenty-three budget that we forgot to include that in the budget. And and we're hoping that this will be enough.
Okay.
We can't guarantee that, but we're hoping that it's enough.
Because I, I feel like we spent like seven hundred thousand or something?
Yeah, and I didn't get to finish looking. I got pulled in all different directions. I know you would ask that question. But I know one year we had, I believe we had budgeted over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in on-call engineering contracts.
Okay, all right. I just, just want to be just be safe. I just wasn't sure if this was enough. But that those are all my questions. I'm good, because it's needed.
Thank you, Councilman. Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Any comments? Councilman President.
Yeah, one question, I guess I have this questions for the council attorney. And as was brought up, this has already been approved by the Board of Works, the three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Should that come in front of the council prior to going to the Board of Works? Or are they allowed to approve it, and then it comes to us?
Any con any contract approval that's made without an appropriate appropriation is void on its face. As a state law. So this should go back for the Board of Works after the appropriation.
Yeah, but I'm saying they already did it.
They gotta go back.
Doesn't count.
Yeah, they did it, then they brought it to us, now it's gotta go back to them, so they shouldn't have done it to begin with, correct?
And I will take responsibility for that also. I was sick for three weeks between Thanksgiving and Christmas, and I missed this being presented to the Board of Works. I was thinking they weren't going to the Board of Works till after the first of the year, so I I do take responsibility for this also. And Councilwoman Dyche, this is not a normal practice. Amber and I just lost a little bit of communication with me being so sick that it got put on the agenda before she had the opportunity to ask me if the money had been appropriated.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Councilman Paul Prespolinski.
Well.
And I'm, I'm saying, Councilman.
All right. My concern is that yeah, we're spending money on engineering, and I know that that's a needed service, but I thought that we discussed that the last time we appropriated money, that we're gonna try to get a full-time engineer online, or even I I saw in that, in that contract that were, you know, given I don't know, nominal fee to Haas and Primera is getting oh, quite a bit of the contract, so are we gonna, are we trying to keep, one of, this is to the members of the Board of Works? Are we trying to keep our engineering costs in line, or are we trying to inflate the the price tag to justify? Are we trying to inflate the the price tag to justify a position? That we don't have to fill that position, say you're spending three hundred and. Twenty-five thousand dollars and we're gonna. I don't know, are we ever gonna, are we advertising for engineer, are we gonna up that any? To whatever is decided on by the Board of Works?
Um, Mister President, I'd like to answer that.
Uh, please, uh, Mayor Perry.
Thank you, uh, we're not inflating this number to justify an engineer, we're satisfying a need. The reason it went before the Board of Works is because we lo- we. Lost one of the engineering firms we were working with when John Doyle passed away. That we then turned to Haas, we've got two very active activities going on right now. The double track which should slow down once they get all the track laid and the intersections done, which are moving forward. Now that will reduce the amount of involvement of Brad Minnick of Primera. But we are accelerating as much as we can. The community crossings program, which is what we're looking to Haas for, but we constantly have other. Items coming up for work, like one that comes to my mind right away. We have four lady firefighters now and we're gonna have more. And our four fire stations do not have facilities separating the male firefighters from the female firefighters. And we have to have that, so I I know we're not here tonight to talk about that, but. We're constantly recognizing additional needs. This not being in inflated to justify a a job. We have been adverti- or justified engineer, we have been advertising. More than indeed, our latest go-around was we got acquainted with an association of engineers. In the southern half of state, so we posted there, we it it's a tough field, we're not getting them. We're just not getting applications. We're not playing any games here, we're just trying to cover the bases of what we've got going.
Thank you, Mayor Perry, any other council comments? Councilman, uh, President.
Uh, yeah, thank you, uh, number one. I know we started out at two hundred thousand. Now that ordinance was pulled off the table and now we're up to three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Uh, and I know we talked about this last fall with an appropriation of engineering during the bu- yeah, during the budget process, that's what it was. And, you know, what the city was gonna do to try to get a uh full-time. Engineer and it stays at part-time engineer. But yet, okay, ninety-seven thousand, I believe is that is the uh. Uh, figure that's being it's being advertised right now for that job, but anyway. Uh, we don't have money to find for a full-time engineer. But yet we have money to find for an assistant street superintendent. For an assistant events planner, we have money for that. We have fifteen thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars to buy new carpeting. In City Hall, where we don't have the money to buy a full, to get a full-time. Engineer to say a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand dollars. So, if you take three hundred and twenty-five thousand that we're gonna spend now. You know, I know it's it wouldn't cover all the work, but you could hire two engineers with three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars every year going to the budget. And maybe just farm out a little bit of engineering work. Uh, I just don't, I don't get it, uh, why we have to spend so much on engineering. And I think that this amount is too much, I think it should be cut somewhat. And I have nothing against Primera, I have nothing against Haas, I'm just looking at the cost. And the logic behind what we're doing here with this money on this engineering. We could have with the money we spent last fall on having uh engineering work done. We could have possibly put in for a full-time engineer, we probably could have had one. Maybe by now, so, and I know that there are attempts being made. Uh, by the Personnel Director to hire uh a full-time engineer. But I really think we need to get off of this part-time status and get a full-time engineering here. And and get and get it over with, so that the full-time engineer will be here doing some of this work that I think. That these part, the Haas could is the one and Primera is the one, why couldn't our full-time engineer be doing some of that work? Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, now just. Sometimes my mind gets a little fuzzy, so I I do remember, I think when we did have a full-time engineer, I think we were using. Uh, global engineering, S E H and Haas, and I I I do recall. If that being seven hundred, you know, five hundred to one, couple hundred to another, another hundred to one, so. I don't know if not having a full-time engineer is stopping the the need for this outside engineering, I I'm not sure, but. I just, I know we use a lot of engineers as well as having a full-time engineer for, so.
So, if I know if that, yeah, no. But what I what I was gonna add is the market is tight and that um it still would be hard hard to find a full-time engineer and. We will be um probably, and I'm just, I'm gonna assume, but I'm gonna say it. We will get someone who's fresh out of college, we will be paying them, they wouldn't have the experience that we need and. And basically that P E, all that's doing is allowing them to sign off on stuff. But they s- we still will have the on-call because. It does face it, there aren't as many municipal engineers that want to have full-time. Work, so it's just a, we're fighting all the different municipalities in this in this uh arena. Um, and that's why we're not getting any takers on it. Um, and for us to go full-time, we're probably gonna probably gonna get somebody brand-new out of college. Out of the engineering school that is um. I've been there, you know, we just don't have the experience unless they've been interning with us, which is probably a good idea. For the mayor is, we should probably should have some type of engineering program in internship or something where. They can work with and we pay for them, so that we can at least develop them to be our municipal engineer at some point because. It's just gonna be hard to find it and uh we're still gonna be stuck paying or even more. Um, uh, it's just a bad situation.
Well, Mister President.
Oh, yeah, Councilman, Councilman.
Okay, yeah, yeah, and in and in response to uh. That's one Deitch, uh, I still think we need to move in the direction of a full-time. Engineer, now the whether we still have to pay some engineering on the side. I understand that, cause one engineer can't do all the work, we all know that. But I still think an in-house, full-time city engineer is needed. Just like I said, we will, we all talk about the money, you know, is the money gonna do any good? Well, just as I explained. We, apparently there's a need for a assistant street superintendent, so boom. He's in the budget or they're in the budget and they got a job, we needed an assistant. Uh, events planner, boom, forty grand, forty-five thousand in the budget, got it. But now we try to get a full-time engineer to cut back on some of the costs. That we're giving away here and we seem to wanna push back and say. This won't work, this won't work, we can't do it, we've been advertising. But I I get, my point is, how hard have we been advertising? Have we gone out and reached out to a headhunter to have them go out and try to find an engineer and bring us in? I don't know if that's actually happening here and with this administration, I don't know what their plan is, but. My plan is is to keep pushing for a full-time engineer. If it don't happen now, I hope to see it in next year's budget, that we're gonna, we're going to. Put that in the budget to finance a full-time engineer and stop giving our monies away to outside concerns, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, any other comments from the council?
Can can this go to a committee or um? Committee, cause I know um I I did speak to um. Our H R director about a month ago, it was a, it's been over a month ago, and I know she had reached out to other municipalities. So she is, uh, she she has reached out to see what they're doing, if they're doing sharing and all that. But I know that she was actively um looking at other municipalities and ways. That we can do it differently and maybe there's a workshop or, I'm not saying a workshop or committee or whatever. That this could go to or or we can ask for maybe um her to come present. And tell us what she's doing and maybe there's a recommendation from the administration for an additional amount of money for a full-time engineer.
That motion.
Yep.
Recommendation. Okay. And just uh for record, I will have the committee assignments on the next uh on agenda for our special meeting, so. We can look into having these committee hearings if necessary, right then. Um, any more council comments? Okay, this will be held over for a second reading. Ms. Nyle, can you read our next ordinance?
An ordinance on first reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the A R P coronavirus. Local physical recovery fund for the sixth addition addition to the initial plan for use of portions of the city's allotment. Of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies for the purchase of a street loader. And this is introduced by Miss Deitch, Mister Dabney and Miss Jacobs.
Any uh comments from the hoppers? Ever none, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Ever none, this will be held over for a second reading, Ms. Nyle, can you read our next ordinance on first reading, please?
Oh, an ordinance on first reading by Tom Holley approving additional appropriation in the budget of the A R P coronavirus. Local physical recovery fund for the sixth addition into the initial plan. For the use of a portion of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan. Act to allocate monies for the park improvements, and this is introduced by Mister Dabney and Miss Jacobs.
Any comments from our sponsors? Uh, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public, comments from the council? Ever none, this will be held over for a second reading, that's now to read our next ordinance.
An ordinance on first reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the A R P coronavirus. Local physical recovery fund for the sixth addition to the initial plan for use of portion of the city's allotment of local physical recovery. Funds through the American Rescue Plan Act to allocate monies. Uh, infrastructure for the city's east side annex property, and this is introduced by Miss Deitch, Mister Dabney and Miss Jacobs.
Any comments from us uh sponsors? Comments from the sponsors? Any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilman, uh, President.
Yeah, I'd like to be put on as a co-sponsor on that, please. And um, I am uh gonna support this because I believe. In the long run, it's going to save the ratepayers money, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember President, Councilman Simmons.
I would like to also be added as a co- co-sponsor.
Thank you, Councilman, any other comments from the council? Ever then, this will be held over for a second reading. Ms. Ms. Nyle, our next ordinance on first reading, please.
An ordinance on first reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the A R P coronavirus. Local physical recovery fund for the sixth addition to the initial plan for use of portion. Of the city's allotment of local physical recovery funds through the American Rescue Plan. Add to allocate monies for the purchase of a fire truck, and this is introduced by Mister Dabney and Miss Jacobs.
Uh, comments from the sponsors?
Yes, I'd like to pull my support for this.
Councilwoman Jacobs is pulling her support for this.
And I uh pulled my support for this uh ordinance as well.
Councilman Dabney is also pulling his support, is there anyone wanting to sponsor this ordinance? Ever none, this must be that's for lack of sponsor. New business. Mayor Mayor Perry is requesting the advice and consent of the Michigan City Common Council regarding his reappointment of following members of the Michigan City Arts Committee. Term will begin amid immediately and expire uh February twenty-eighth, twenty-six. Uh, Miss Jane Daly, Miss Robin Khan, Miss Shannon Easton, Miss Judy Jacoby. Mister Matt Cubic, Miss Kathy Dennis and Miss Carol Anne Brown. We need to vote on these. Can we do it all at once?
Yeah, yeah, I was gonna move for all of them.
Okay.
I moved that we um uh approved the advising consent of Miss Jane Daly, Robin Cone, Miss Shannon Easton. Miss Judy Jacoby, Mister Matt Cubic, Miss Kathy Dennis and Miss Carol Anne Brown.
Uh, motion or second?
Yeah, we have a motion by Councilwoman Deitch and a second by Councilman Don Prespolinski.
Yeah, Mister President, if I may, just to say a word about this commission, because I sit on the Arts Commission. And I can guarantee you, this is one of the hardest working commissions. Professional commissions in Michigan City that are trying to do their utmost uh for Michigan City when it comes to the arts community. And I I back every one of the uh nominees on this she here tonight.
I agree.
Right, I have a motion and a second, Miss Nyle, wanna vote, please?
Mister Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mister Matt.
Hi.
Miss Deitch.
Hi.
Mister Don Prespolinski.
Hi.
Mister Simmons.
Hi.
Miss Jacobs.
Hi.
Mister Paul Prespolinski.
Hi.
Miss Tillman.
Hi.
And Mister Dabney.
Bye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyle, and congratulations to the uh. Let's read our Arts Commission reappointments. Uh, Mayor Perry is requesting the advice and consent of the Michigan City Common Council regarding his reappointment of Diana Gore as a member of the Michigan City Human Rights Commission. Term will begin immediately and expire February second, two thousand twenty-seven. Um, Ms. Nyle, oh, council.
Yeah.
Mister President, I make the motion that we vote on this uh this evening.
Support Miss Diane Gore.
We have a motion by Councilman uh Don Prespolinski and second by Councilwoman Deitch to uh support the the. Appointment of Miss Diane Gore.
And if I may, uh, I'm also the liaison to the Human Rights Commission and. Diana Gore has just been elected as uh president, so we have to put her. It would be a good idea to put her back on her so she could serve her term as uh as president and. She does a fantastic job, very professional, and she'll do a great job as uh president of the commission also.
Thank you, Councilman, Ms. Nyle, wanna vote?
Mister Mac.
Hi.
Miss Deitch.
Hi.
Mister Don Prespolinski.
Hi.
Mister Simmons.
Hi.
Miss Jacobs.
Hi.
Mister Paul Prespolinski.
Hi.
Miss Tillman.
Hi.
Mister Dabney.
Hi.
And Mister Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Congratulations, Miss Gore, uh, Mayor Perry is requesting the advice and consent of the Michigan City Common Council regarding the reappointment of the following members. To the Michigan City Historic Review Board, term will begin immediately and expire March fifteenth, two thousand twenty-six. Uh, Mister Dan Gwenquist, Miss Amy Bowman and Mister Gregory Coulter. Third motion.
Yeah, I'm going to approve the uh members of the Michigan City Historic Review Board.
Yeah, I move to approve the uh members of the Michigan City Historic Board.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Jacobs and a second by Councilman Paul Prespolinski to. Uh approve the appointments to the Historic Review Board. Miss Nyle, wanna vote?
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
And Mr. Matt.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Miss Nyle, and congratulations to the reappointments. Okay, Mayor Perry is requesting the advice and consent of the Michigan City Common Council regarding his appointment of. Patrick Reynolds to the Michigan City Cemetery Board of Trustees. Term will begin immediately and expire December thirty first, two thousand twenty three.
And Mr. President, I make the uh motion that we vote on this uh this evening.
Okay, we have a second by Councilman. Don Prespolinski and second by Councilwoman Deitch to appoint Patrick Reynolds to the Michigan City Cemetery Board of Trustees.
And if I may, Mr. President, uh I know Patrick Reynolds personally. Uh he's in the funeral business here in Michigan City, uh you know him also.
Yes, very well.
And uh he'll be a professional and and a well needed added member. Uh to that board.
Thank you, Mr. Uh I think Councilman. Press wants to mayor.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you very much. Unfortunately, uh this should have been. Removed from your agenda because there's been a question of a conflict of interest raised by members of. The cemetery board by Mr. Reynolds being on that board, so I am removing. My request for your advising consent on this matter. It will be on your agenda later date.
Okay, thank you, uh Mayor Perry. So that will be uh. So as I said earlier, the twenty three, twenty twenty three council committee assignments will be on our the agenda for our special meeting. Or twenty fourth. And any any requests or uh? Oh, any requests to the committee requests, please have them made to me by maybe the end of the week, so. I can review those and have them ready for the next meeting Tuesday. Okay, unfinished business. The council has eight appointments to the Michigan City Social Status of African American males. Term expires February fifteenth, twenty twenty three, and. Is a one year term incumbent. Pastor Carol Henry Rice, uh Pastor Kimberly Williams Ministerials Association, Linda Fay Conley, N W A C P. Willie Millsap, Swanson Center, Rodney McCormick, M C resident, Dwayne Hurt, M C, Michigan City Area Schools. Uh Pastor Robert Johnson, Minority Health Partners, Tracy Tillman, county. Are there any uh? Applications for these positions?
Okay, I have received a a letter from the Human Rights for Pastor Carol. I received a letter from uh Pastor Kimberly Williams resigning. Um I also received a another one. Uh Rodney McCormick, I received an application from him. One from Tommy Kavolik, one from Michael Jones. Pardon?
I can't do that, I'm going down the parameter.
Okay, so, okay, so Tommy is off. Um Michael Jones and Dennis Gooch, the mayor has appointed him. So we have uh Rodney McCormick and Michael Jones. And I also received um. A letter from Pastor Robert Johnson for the Minority Health Partners.
Good, thank you. Uh. Thank you, Miss Nyle, but any nominations? Councilman Dabney.
Yeah, I nominate uh Michael Jones Senior.
Yeah, but nomination for Michael Jones Senior.
So can we do, so there's. There's several different ones, so that one is specifically for the Michigan City resident. So how do you wanna, what's the best way you want us to do this?
Okay, well, yes, I know what you're saying because of the letters. So I think maybe the letters first and then do nominate.
The letters for, the letters that have been received.
Received.
Okay. So the that was a.
Pastor Carol.
Pastor Carol.
Um Pastor Robert Johnson, those are the only two I've received. Cuz um Pastor Kimberly Williams resigned.
So I I move that we accept the the letters from the. Minority Health Partners for Pastor Robert Johnson and for um from the Human Rights. Department, the letter from for Pastor Carol.
Is there a second?
Support.
Okay, so we have a motion to accept the nomination. From uh Human Rights Commission and the Minority Health Partners. Uh for Pastor Carol and Pastor Robert Johnson, and second by Councilwoman Tillman. Miss Nyle, wanna vote?
Um Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Wait, do we vote next time, or we just accept the nominations? We should do nominations and vote next time.
You're not really nominating up, you're approving.
Okay.
The entity that's.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, sorry.
Just wanna ask, okay.
I got a question. Did uh? You receive anything eh from? Any of the other applicant, any of the other?
No, I wouldn't state.
Not at this time.
Not at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Okay, so can I continue?
Yes, please.
Then you, did you say that we?
Can we get some clarity in regards to all of the ones that are current incumbents that you have received?
There's only two.
I named them.
They were named in the motion.
Yep, I named them. It's Pastor Carol from the Human Rights Department. And Pastor Robert Johnson from from the Minority Health Partners. That we.
From their organization.
From their organizations.
And we didn't receive anything from anybody else, so.
Usually, like, they're not, their appointments aren't up till fifteen February.
Right.
So.
So they still have time to get them in.
The others.
Okay.
So these are just, yes.
So the two that are, and we're gonna approve them now, and.
Okay.
But we're gonna vote on them now. Okay, uh can you please carry on, Miss Nyle? Thank you.
All right, I'll start over. Uh Mr. Don Prespolinski.
Aye.
Mr. Simmons.
Carolyn Johnson. Aye, yeah, that's the motion.
Uh Ms. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Who do you say?
I I'm abstaining from voting.
You, what, what do you?
I'm abstaining.
Okay, uh Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
And Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and one abstained.
And now some nominations. Are there any nominations for the M C, the M C resident, correct?
As me.
Miss Nyle.
Okay, wait a minute. He uh Bryant did a motion.
For Mike Jones.
For Mike Jones. Do we have a second?
Seconds. That's a real promotion for uh Mr. Mike Jones by Councilman Dabney and a second by Councilman Mac. Any other nominations?
Eh yeah, I'd like to uh nominate uh incumbent Rodney McCormick, even though. We just said that they got till the fifteenth to turn in paperwork, but.
These are just nominations.
Rodney and from Mr. Jones.
You did?
Yes.
Okay, I'm making a nomination for Rodney. Mr. McCormick.
Second.
A second. So we have one nomination for Mr. Mike Jones and one nomination for Mr. Rodney McCormick. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other applicants, I should say? Okay, so these will be held over for uh voted our next meeting. And Miss Nyle, do you usually reach out to the other organizations, or do they just usually get the letters in by the deadline?
Um no, I I do not. That's up to the committee itself to reach out.
Okay.
They want.
Waiter. Okay. Thank you, Miss Nyle. Uh nominations, the council has one. Appointment to the Michigan City Tree Board. Term expires February fifteenth, two thousand twenty three, and a one year term. Uh incumbent Laura Henderson, representing Elston Grove Neighborhood Association. And any other uh applicants?
I have not received anything from them, but um.
Is there a letter from the Lo- uh Elston Grove?
No, I think Brian reached out online trying to get the letter.
So who's the uh Elston Grove? Yeah, I did.
We'll take no action at this time on that. Uh Common Council has one appointment. Business to the Michigan City Urban Enterprise Association due to Ms. Esther Gunson resignation from her appointment. Term begins immediately and expires December thirty first, twenty twenty four. Uh are there any applicants for that position?
No, I have not received any.
Thank you, Miss Nyle. Uh comments from the public? Uh we have one comment online.
Tommy Flavre thirteen sixteen on Iowa Street, I wanna give a big shout out and praise to uh. Our Transit Director Robin Tillman, our I T Director uh Annie Metanic, I think they do deserve a big raise. Uh I think they're upgrading to Michigan City Transit two point O, they're gonna roll out a. Uh Transit app's gonna have the G P S, where it's gonna have the coordinates, where you can track exactly where the bus is at in the city, and it's gonna. Gonna um tell you right what exactly down to the minute when the bus is gonna arrive at your stop. I think that's gonna be great. So it's gonna have a mobile fare app where you have your near field communication technology, you just tap your phone automatically, pay your pay your fare. You don't have to go to the, physically go to the controller's office and put down your twenty dollars and give you a paper pass or no. No more plunking your dollar in the cash box. It'll just be tap and go. It's. Other cities, well, they has transit services, they've had this for about ten years, and I think it's great, we're finally getting that. Um city needs quit a quote, quit uh the school system, they need to quit part on their properties off on the city. Um eh that and that includes Gilfield. Um you know, I went around when John, when Johnny Stanley was on the on the the council, they. The city acquired the about three acres just north of the school administration building, that was basically the old Riley Elementary School Yard. Uh he wanted to put a dog park up there. Now, the only thing the city's doing is mowing the grass. Um the city don't need to be for anymore properties until they knock down the the six and watered property. And I don't call it the West Side Police Substation building, I'm just calling it, that that that's a disgrace to the police, thank you.
Thank you, Miss Flavre. Any comments from the public? Oh. We have one one comment online then. Uh city plan. Ms. Uh Burke.
Oh, yeah, good, okay.
Cat Burke.
Yeah, I was gonna, actually, that's why I'm here.
Okay. I don't know if that's a, Mr. Or Miss. Mr. Pat Burke.
I'm here.
Oh, you're, you have the floor.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm just trying to just reattach the sewer. Uh I purchased the thirteen oh two. Lake Shore Drive property, which is the full first full house in Long Beach. There's a house to my, I guess you would call it uh. Uh what to the west of me, that is half in Michigan City and half in Long Beach. I believe that they've already been allowed to reconnect to the sewer. So I have an existing account number, it was connected before. I have gotten a easement, which is recorded uh from both neighbors to my west. Um I'm just looking for approval to reconnect the sewer uh as it was connected before.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Uh comments from the public, Mr. York.
I was just getting up here to uh address that one, just to make sure that it gets done for Mr. Burke. Um you know, you guys put a new, the new ordinances in place. And in in saying that, you you do, it it is outside the jurisdiction, it does require your. Your approval to at this point, I do believe. Just, yeah.
Is the address I thought was thirteen hundred, I thought our, we go down to fourteen hundred.
But it's in Long Beach.
Okay.
It's this is a Long, this is a Long Beach uh resident that just wants to reconnect back to it. I do think that their ordinance doesn't alleviate the need to unfortunately still sign the waiver or objection. Or even though it's a fifteen year period, I don't know that we're gonna annex a Long Beach resident, but it does require that. But it is, it is in Long Beach, so.
But I thought those were the, that's, those were the comments that we, we um. We placed into the um eh the um amendment to 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 ensure that. Our intent is not to annex.
Yeah, we're, I don't think that's our intent. I don't know that it alleviates the needs from L, maybe you got me.
Correct, so the waiver still has to be signed.
Okay.
Yeah, it it's not saying we're going to, it's.
Okay.
It's just a. I guess the process to to unless you guys wanna uh amended again.
Yeah, and and you have the form that.
So we've created one, um uh Mr. Snow reviewed it today and sent it to me. Um I got a review, I wanna give it a one more review. I talked to Mr. Malovich about it too, go on, make sure that he's aware of it. And knows what's going on. Um yeah, I do have that form, and I could get that to you guys if you. In a, gi- give me a day to review it, just to make sure we're okay. Very simple form, but it doesn't um. Not allow the connection to happen or anything like that, it's just a, it's just a, this is how the process is laid out in our in our ordinance.
So it doesn't have to be on the agenda as a formal thing to approve?
We thought that it needed to be.
It shouldn't be, so should that be on the special meeting agenda or something else, because I can't see.
That's that's kinda what I was confused tonight. I was like, okay, we're gonna hear it, hearing this.
Be submitted by the deadline, like everything else. I know we had a correspondence before.
Yeah.
About it, but I don't think it was formally put on the agenda.
No, no, it wouldn't need to be. The correspondence was absolutely.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, there was more correspondence from Mr. Chris Willoughby, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, this really would. This is Pat, if I could just comment, and yeah, I know this is a a little bit of a uh. Out there cuz it it's new, but um. I'm having a difficult time because I don't know how to get it approved, so. I've I've jumped through the hoops of Mr. Willoughby from Long, with the Long Beach Town Council has approved it. The attorney for Long Beach has given a communication saying that they're okay with it. I have spent money and gotten an easement and recorded the easement. And there is a previously existing account number, which I've communicated to you. So in essence, it's just reattaching a sewer that was attached in the first place. So um again, if it can't be answered tonight, that's fine, but I'm trying, I I'm. You know, the house is being built, and I need to figure out who has the ability to answer the questions of getting the connectivity done. I was told I just need your approval, fill out the application, give five hundred dollars, and we should be done, but I I don't understand the process. And I understand you may not have the answer tonight, but if I could get a contact to understand how this works, that would be terrific.
Yeah, um Pat, well, um this is Skylar, um. Gail and I will make a point, Miss Nyle and I will make, I'm sorry, Clerk Nyle and I will make a point to uh talk to talk to you tomorrow so that she knows what to do. Th- this would come before the council in a form of a resolution now.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's not an ordinance.
Whatever you do, just send it to us and see who will sponsor it. I'll I'll sponsor it, whatever you need to do.
Yeah, this is a, this is a little bit, I know we tried to make that ordinance as good as we could, but there are always nominees that pop up. And unfortunately, this is our first one, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mister.
Okay.
Any comments from the public?
Yeah, just Mister Burke again. It's fine. Gail, should I follow up with you? Cause I'm, I'm still thoroughly confused as to the process going.
We're gonna get this going.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you, everyone.
Sure.
Thank you, Mister Burke. Uh Mister York.
Um, I was just speaking with um attorney. Um we, what we would like to do is probably draft up a simple resolution that could be recycled and used. It can be drafted for anyone, so it makes it easy.
Copy and paste the name and address.
Absolutely, something very easy and user-friendly where you're not always hiring to hire an attorney to come do that, since it's a resolution. Yeah, we'll, we'll work on that. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I got no room, bro.
Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Public comment is closed. Council comment? Councilman Simmons?
Yes, I'd like to thank Officer Charles Henderson on his years of service on the Michigan City Police Department.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Simmons.
Councilman Dabney, yeah, real quick, I just wanted to make a comment uh as we all celebrated uh Martin Luther King Day yesterday. And um, yeah, saw some, you know, some of the different events that was held in his honor. And uh, you know, so, so people see that as a happy day. Um, to me, some of the things that are happening, I, I don't see it as, as quite a happy day. Um, Doctor King, uh when he was alive, he, he spoke a word, which sometimes now is actually a bad word to some here in this country, uh the word equality. Um, equality to some means that if somebody else starts to move ahead, they feel like others are taking from them. And uh so equality has become a dirty word in some circles. Um, some people see that holiday as just a day off, but it's a lot more than that to me. Uh Doctor King was assassinated in Memphis, Tennessee. What he was doing down in Memphis, Tennessee was actually fighting uh for sanitation workers' rights, uh about their working conditions, including their equipment and their pay. His whole purpose, uh when he went to fight, uh what, what he fought for was better housing, better wages, uh workplace safety and um schooling for the underprivileged. He actually called this the uh Poor People's Campaign. Um, he was killed in April nineteen sixty-eight, and yet things that he fought for back then is really sad that we're still fighting for some of these things today. Uh there was legislation passed, you know, even before Doctor King was assassinated, uh Civil Rights Act, the Voting Rights Act and things like that, but we're still having issues with some of these things. These are laws that have passed um that some people in, in areas are fighting to have those enforced uh to improve their lives. And there were many other civil rights laws that were passed, you know, after Doctor King and even before. This country has millions of people, millions of people, not only black people uh who are still fighting, once again, to have these laws enforced that are on the books. And I have a message to African Americans here in Michigan City, anybody else that can hear me, as well as poor people uh or the, the underprivileged, as I, I say. You know, we, we had these people go and fight for our rights to vote. Um, and yet, I see nationwide African American voters, voting percentages, like half of that population. Barack Obama actually said this years ago, um what kind of power we had if we just voted at eighty percent? And this is, it makes me sad to see a lot of people on, on Facebook talking about people should not vote. Your vote doesn't really count. Um, that is so sad to hear that because it counts for all of us. Uh but a lot of people you know, take that right for granted. People died for that right uh for us to vote. And it's really sad um that we take that for granted, and I wish we would get a, a higher voter turnout um here uh in Michigan City, La Porte County, uh because there were, like I said, there were people that died for those rights to vote. Doctor King put his life on the line. He gave a speech actually in Memphis um where he actually foresaw his death. He was really under the pressure of the, the threats and the death threats that were going on, and you could see the pressure in his face uh in his voice as he, he gave that speech. So I, I wanna just say that out to our people here in Michigan City. You need to start looking to vote on your local level, the state level, as well as the uh national level to get these people to pass laws that will help you uh improve your housing conditions uh that will improve your, your wages and pay and just give you a better life, that chance uh to survive here in the United States. We have this income gap that is continuing to, to grow. Uh these were the things that Doctor King fought for. Um, and I just wanna know, or want people to know that I don't think, you know, he died you know, for, for no cause, because he, it was very important, the things that he was trying to do. And I want the public to hear that, to know that, and I hope we start to do better as a city, as a county, as a country, as a state, in terms of exercising our rights to get out and stand up uh and vote. It is very important. You put the people in offices that, that pass laws or try to pass laws um that improve your housing conditions and things of that sort. So really take this seriously. And um that's all I have to say about that, and thank you.
Thanks, Councilman Dabney. All right. And here are the comments from the council. Any other comments from the council?
Have none, uh.
Motion to adjourn. You get the comments?
Nope. We have a motion to adjourn.
Most excited, girl.
All right.
Don't need it.
All right. Have a good night, everyone.